Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 15, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. As is our tradition, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank all of you for joining us in that. My name is Lisa Cholet, and I'm currently the Chair of the Planning Commission. I've been on the Planning Commission for approximately two years, and I live in the town of Wellington. I'm joined by my colleagues, who will each go around and introduce themselves with their name, their time on the board, and where they currently reside, starting to my right.
I'm Adam Eggleston. I've been on the Commission for a little bit over a year and a half, and I'm southeast Fort Collins.
Good evening. I'm John Weiss. I live in Timneth, and I've been on the Commission for about 18 months.
Hello, I'm Shelby King. I live in Laporte, and I've been on the Commission for a little more than two years.
Good evening, Zachary Sullivan. Been on just about a year and love in Colorado.
Good evening. My name is Connor Duffy. I've been on the Planning Commission for a little over three years, and I live in the Timneth area.
Do we have any Commissioners online?
We do. I'm John Slutske, and I live in southeast Fort Collins, and I've been on the Commission for three and a half years.
Okay. Okay, now I will turn it over to the Planning Manager for this evening, Cassidy Fior, for introductions and to share some hearing procedures and instructions.
Thank you, Chair Cholet. My name is Cassidy Fior, and I'm a Principal Planner here at Larimer County, standing in for Jenny Axmaker, our Planning Manager. I'm joined at the dais tonight by Melissa Bruski and Ryan Oswandell from our Planning Administrative Team, Scott Benton, Environmental Planner, Laura Cullaton, Planner Two, and Christine Luckasen from our County Attorney's Office. We're also joined at the staff table across the way by Matt LaFerty, Principal Planner, Jared C., Planner Two, Samantha Lasher, Planner Two, Leslie Ellis, Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources Director, Tracy Shambo, Senior Civil Engineer, and Leah Schneider, Environmental Health Planner. We are also joined online by Alan Key, Lead Plans Examiner, and we have Cody Byrd, Planning Director for the town of Wellington, in the audience. Please bear with me for a moment as I go over a brief procedural overview. We respectfully request that all members of the public silence their electronic devices. Please feel free to help yourself to a copy of the agenda and hearing procedure instructions, which are located on the wall just to the right of the hearing room entrance, and are also posted online at larimer.org/bocc-commissioners-meetings. For tonight, we are using a sign-up sheet for public comment, and time limits for public comment may be implemented by the Chair. Regarding hearing procedures, for each discussion item tonight, we will begin with a presentation from county staff, followed by a presentation from the applicant, with time for any clarifying questions from Commissioners. There will then be an opportunity for any members of the public to address the Commission with their comments on the matter. Please sign up if you wish to make public comment, and the Chair has implemented a three-minute limit for comments tonight. Both the applicant and county staff will then have an opportunity to respond to any questions or concerns raised during public testimony. The Commission will then ask any remaining questions of the applicant or staff before entering into deliberation and working toward a recommendation or decision on the matter. If the Planning Commissioners have a legal question during the hearing, they may elect to go into executive session with the County Attorney. Executive sessions are private meetings where the Board can get confidential legal advice. So rather than asking everyone in attendance to exit the hearing room, the Board will relocate to a smaller private room. During public comment, please wait to speak until recognized by the Chair. Please maintain civility, refraining from audience applause, comments, or disruptions, whether positive and/or negative. Anyone causing a disruption during the public hearing will be asked to leave. Please direct all comments to the Commissioners from the podium. A portable microphone is available if needed. Please state your name at the beginning of your comments and provide the spelling of your name if it is uncommon or unique. Please speak directly into the microphone so that remote participants on Zoom may hear. On Zoom, attendees will be muted until they are recognized by the Chair to speak. If an online attendee wishes to speak or requests that a consent item be removed and moved to the discussion agenda, please use the raise hand function on the Zoom control bar when asked. Upon request, assisted listening devices are available for the hearing impaired. Tonight, there is currently one item on the consent agenda and two items on the discussion agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fior. Now I'll go through some additional information, including what is on our agenda today. Today, we have the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting in September. We have Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-zone-3789. We have USS Welch Solar Facility 1041, file number 25-zone-3793. And we have Wellington GMA Overlay Zone District, file number 25-zone-3802. Typically, items on the consent agenda are considered routine in nature, and as far as we know, there is no perceived or significant controversy. Items on the consent agenda will not have a staff presentation. The applicant will not get to speak, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment, unless the item is actually pulled from the consent agenda. Commissioners are able to pull an item from the consent agenda as well as the public. If that occurs, then there would be a presentation, public comment, and all of the rest. For items on the discussion agenda, there will be a presentation from staff. There is an opportunity for the applicant to make their case, and there is an opportunity for public comment. After that, the applicant and then staff can make a rebuttal to the public comment. The Commissioners can ask questions of the applicant and staff, and then we will enter into deliberations where we will do our best to make an informed decision. Thank you for listening, and with that in mind, let's go to the first agenda item, the approval of our minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from September 17, 2025.
Second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Weiss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Eggleston.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Slutske.
Stan.
King.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Cholet.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to the consent agenda. That is going to be item one on the agenda, Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-zone-3789. Do any of my fellow Commissioners wish to pull this item from the consent agenda? No one online either? No Commissioners from online? Does anyone in the public wish to pull this item from the consent agenda? Please step to the podium. Do I need them to step to the podium to say anything? No. Okay. Well, with that, we will pull it, and typically, as we would do that at the end of our evening, but if I could poll the audience, how many people wish to speak on that item, given you're likely from the Estes Park area? Okay, so we will hear that item first tonight, just so that you all can get back up the canyon when we're done? Okay, so with that, we will move on to our discussion items, with the first item being the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-zone-3789. And we will start with a staff presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Laura Cullaton, Planner Two, and I'll be presenting on the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-zone-3789. The subject property is located at 5532 East Highway 36 in Estes Park, which is approximately five miles southeast of the town of Estes Park along Highway 36. The property is zoned open, and it's about 38.9 acres in size. The property is served by an onsite well, onsite septic, the Estes Valley Fire Protection District, and takes access off of State Highway 36. There are two previous land use approvals associated with this property, the first being from 1982. There was approval of a special review to allow for a religious retreat in the open zone district. This approval included plans to expand and remodel an existing motel resort lodge and provide a facility for year-round activities. In 2013, there was approval of a special review for a state licensed group home in the open zone district, and this approval allowed for no more than 24 youth residents onsite. The Fire Mountain Special Review, which was from 2013, specified that no more than 24 youth residents were allowed, no more than 12 horses, and their use were limited to equine therapy for participants in the residential program. This approval also allowed for onsite staff trainings, daytime workshops and camps, as well as biannual fundraising banquets. The applicant today is requesting approval of an amended special review for the state-licensed group home to remove the previously approved age restrictions and increase capacity from 24 to 45 individuals. The original Fire Mountain Special Review was approved in 2013, and today, the property owner is Bear Tribe LLC, which is the same operator as the Fire Mountain Special Review. Notice of this application was sent to 10 property owners within 500 feet of the property on June 25 of this year. Six community members provided comments in opposition to the proposal. Some of their concerns included negative impact to property values, potential impact on surrounding community, and clientele running away to neighboring properties. Attachment six in your packet includes
How we do. I'm John Slutske and I live in southeast Fort Collins and I've been on the commission for three and a half years.
Okay. Okay, now I will turn it over to the planning manager for this evening Cassidy Pior for introductions and to share some hearing procedures and instructions.
Thank you Chair Chalet, my name is Cassidy Pior and I am a principal planner here at Larimer County, standing in for Jenny Axmaker, our planning manager. I'm joined at the dais tonight by Melissa Bruisky and Ryan Oswandell from our planning administrative team, Scott Benton, environmental planner, Laura Cullaton, planner two, and Christine Luckuson from our county attorney's office. We're also joined at the staff table across the way by Matt LaFerrati, principal planner, Jared C., planner two, Samantha Lasher, planner two, Leslie Ellis, community planning, infrastructure and resources director, Tracy Shambo, senior civil engineer, and Leah Schneider, environmental health planner. We are also joined online by Alan Key, lead plans examiner, and we have Cody Byrd, planning director for the town of Wellington in the audience. Please bear with me for a moment as I go over a brief procedural overview. We respectfully request that all members of the public silence their electronic devices. Please feel free to help yourself to a copy of the agenda and hearing procedure instructions which are located on the wall just to the right of the hearing room entrance and are also posted online at larimer.org/bocc-commissioners-meetings. For tonight, we are using a sign up sheet for public comment and time limits for public comment may be implemented by the chair. Regarding hearing procedures, for each discussion item tonight, we will begin with a presentation from county staff, followed by a presentation from the applicant, with time for any clarifying questions from commissioners. There will then be an opportunity for any members of the public to address the commission with their comments on the matter. Please sign up if you wish to make public comment and the chair has implemented a three-minute limit for comments tonight. Both the applicant and county staff will then have an opportunity to respond to any questions or concerns raised during public testimony. The commission will then ask any remaining questions of the applicant or staff before entering into deliberation and working toward a recommendation or decision on the matter. If the planning commissioners have a legal question during the hearing, they may elect to go into executive session with the county attorney. Executive sessions are private meetings where the board can get confidential legal advice. So rather than asking everyone in attendance to exit the hearing room, the board will relocate to a smaller private room. During public comment, please wait to speak until recognized by the chair. Please maintain civility, refraining from audience applause, comments, or disruptions, whether positive and/or negative. Anyone causing a disruption during the public hearing will be asked to leave. Please direct all comments to the commissioners from the podium. A portable microphone is available if needed. Please state your name at the beginning of your comments and provide the spelling of your name if it is uncommon or unique. Please speak directly into the microphone so that remote participants on Zoom may hear. On Zoom, attendees will be muted until they are recognized by the chair to speak. If an online attendee wishes to speak or requests that a consent item be removed and moved to the discussion agenda, please use the raise hand function on the Zoom control bar when asked. Upon request, assisted listening devices are available for the hearing impaired. Tonight, there is currently one item on the consent agenda and two items on the discussion agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pior. Now I'll go through some additional information, including what is on our agenda today. Today, we have the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting in September. We have Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-Zone 3789. We have USS Welch Solar Facility, 1041, file number 25-Zone 3793. And we have Wellington GMA Overlay Zone District, file number 25-Zone 3802. Typically, items on the consent agenda are considered routine in nature and as far as we know, there is no perceived or significant controversy. Items on the consent agenda will not have a staff presentation. The applicant will not get to speak and there will not be an opportunity for public comment unless the item is actually pulled from the consent agenda. Commissioners are able to pull an item from the consent agenda as well as the public. If that occurs, then there would be a presentation, public comment, and all of the rest. For items on the discussion agenda, there will be a presentation from staff, there's an opportunity for the applicant to make their case, and there is an opportunity for public comment. After that, the applicant and then staff can make a rebuttal to the public comment. The commissioners can ask questions of the applicant and staff and then we will enter into deliberations where we will do our best to make an informed decision. Thank you for listening and with that in mind, let's go to the first agenda item, the approval of our minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from September 17th, 2025. Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Weiss. Sullivan.
Yes.
Eggleston.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Slutske.
Stan.
King.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Chalet.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to the consent agenda. That is going to be item one on the agenda, Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-Zone 3789. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull this item from the consent agenda? No one online either? No commissioners from online? Does anyone in the public wish to pull this item from the consent agenda? Please step to the podium. Do I need them to step to the podium to say anything? No. Okay. Well, with that, we will pull it and typically, as we would do that at the end of our evening, but if I could poll the audience, how many people wish to speak on that item, given it is, you're likely from the Estes Park area? Okay, so we will hear that item first tonight, just so that you all can get back up the canyon when we're done? Okay. So with that, we will move on to our discussion items with the first item being the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-Zone 3789. And we will start with a staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Laura Cullaton, planner two, and I'll be presenting on the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, file number 25-Zone 3789. The subject property is located at 5532 East Highway 36 in Estes Park, which is approximately five miles southeast of the town of Estes Park along Highway 36. The property is zoned open and it's about 38.9 acres in size. The property is served by an onsite well, onsite septic, the Estes Valley Fire Protection District, and takes access off of State Highway 36. There are two previous land use approvals associated with this property, the first being from 1982, there was approval of a special review to allow for a religious retreat in the open zone district. This approval included plans to expand and remodel an existing motel resort lodge and provide a facility for year-round activities. In 2013, there was approval of a special review for a state licensed group home in the open zone district and this approval allowed for no more than 24 youth residents onsite. The Fire Mountain Special Review, which was from 2013, specified that no more than two, 24 youth residents were allowed, no more than 12 horses, and their use were limited to equine therapy for participants in the residential program. This approval also allowed for onsite staff trainings, daytime workshops and camps, as well as biannual fundraising banquets. The applicant today is requesting approval of an amended special review for the state licensed group home to remove the previously approved age restrictions and increase capacity from 24 to 45 individuals. The original Fire Mountain Special Review was approved in 2013 and today, the property owner is Bear Tribe LLC, which is the same operator as the Fire Mountain Special Review. Notice of this application was sent to 10 property owners within 500 feet of the property on June 25th of this year. Six community members provided comments in opposition to the proposal. Some of their concerns included negative impact to property values, potential impact on surrounding community, and clientele running away to neighboring properties. Attachment six in your packet includes community member comments that were received prior to the agenda being published. An additional community member comments were provided to the planning commissioners today via email as well as printed copy at the hearing today, this evening. And then attachment seven with the packet is the applicant's response to these community member comments. The Board of County Commissioners will base their decision on the general review criteria as well as the special review criteria and the standards in Article Four of the Land Use Code, which I am happy to come back to if you have all, if you all have any specific questions about these. Staff are of the opinion that the proposed amended special review meets the criteria in Article 638D, 642D, and the development standards in Article Four. All comments from referral agencies have been addressed or added as conditions of approval. No comments were received from the agencies listed here on the screen. And with that, I have a suggested motion. I move that the planning commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review, subject to the 20 conditions listed here. Also note that the, there was a memo sent out today to commissioners adding a 20th condition, which was left out on accident, so that is listed here on the screen as well. And I'm here for questions, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for staff on this? Okay, I have a question. Can you clarify for me on the buildings A, B, and C, that they're currently used as residential, but it's, I'm confused, are they planning to change the use of those buildings? Because I don't think that's part of the special review, is that correct?
Yes, the applicant is asking to potentially change the occupancy of those buildings to make it more flexible to whether they use it for offices and residences. I think the applicant could explain that more.
Okay. Okay, well, does the applicant have a presentation for us today?
Good evening, planning commissioners, good to see you again. I do have a very short presentation for you. Because this was on consent, I would prefer to just reserve most of whatever time I might have to, to try to address any comments that were, that might be made by the public. Certainly, we have been paying attention to their concerns as, as provided in their emails and such. And I'll start with, with a little background about this. I am Bob Choate, C-H-O-A-T-E. I represent Chris Porta, who's here with me, and her husband Erin Huey, who could not be here this evening, he's, he's out of the country. And they own Bear Tribe LLC and they've been operating the Fire Mountain Youth Group Home since 2013 under the existing permit. So they, they're longstanding members of the community in that respect. We appreciate the recommendation of approval and agree with that from, from Laura and, and we've worked hard to address everybody's, all the referral concerns. Do you all have control of that one? I have 37 slides. I have four slides. Here's the property, it's just a few miles outside of Estes Park, down off Highway 36. It's outside of the Estes Valley Planning Area, it's zoned open. And it is, it is right across the street. Could you go to the next slide, please? Here's the property outlined, it's almost 40 acres, it's right across the street from Jellystone, which is a commercial campground that's been there a long time. You're probably more likely to have noticed that than this facility, which is somewhat low-key in comparison. It is, you can see on this map, and maybe the next one is easier, go ahead, there we go, I think this is my last slide. The Little Thompson River runs to the west of most of the structures onsite and then the Highway 36 is on the east side. And most everything is in that strip there, although the property does have substantial land up the mountain with a couple of hiking trails and such. Realistically, this is a, you know, I really want to point out that what we're asking for is a change, right? And I think there's a big distinction between asking for a change and asking for something brand new, right? What I'm asking you to do, and I think what is appropriate, is to, to judge this application and the criteria by which we need to meet based on the change that is being requested. The property has been used in a commercial capacity for longer than I've been alive, maybe longer than everyone here has been alive. Prior to 1982, it was a motel, a resort lodge. In 1982, it was purchased by a church and became a religious retreat. That's when Ms. Cullaton showed the, the permit from 1982. That permit allowed for events with as many, with as many people as 180, 180 people per event. That was also the impetus for the construction of the super-duper-large septic system that's onsite. And happy to answer any particular questions about the way all of that worked, but over time, it has been used as a, as a, as a restaurant, it has been used, previously, it was in a similar use of the group home, Harvest Home. And for many, many years before Chris and Erin moved in in 2013 and late, and started operating under lease and then bought the property in 2015. So it's been used and it's fully constructed out in its current structure, it was in that, just like that when they bought it, when they moved in, right? So we don't have any new above-ground structures onsite. It's just a, a, a property that has been, has been put to use for a very long time. And, and it's, and although any business may have issues that arise, Chris and Erin pride themselves on trying to do the best they can for their neighbors. And, and I think that that generally shows through. So we're asking for a change, right? This is an existing facility, it is permitted, it is allowed to have juvenile clientele. And the, the background for the change is that this industry is faltering substantially. It primarily has to do with the availability and cost of insurance for this type of business, specifically for youth clientele, for juveniles. It, it is nearly a industry killer and, and Chris and Erin have worked hard to stay afloat, but it is, it is realistically not feasible to continue exclusively serving juveniles. In fact, we will, we anticipate that this is a primarily adult facility once this requested change is approved. So we're really trying to keep the business going. In addition, you, obviously, you see there is an increase in the clientele that is, that would be available onsite. And what happened there was in 2013, Ms. Porta, Chris did this herself, she did not have the benefit of, of attorney or planner or anybody to help her through that process other than the planners that worked for the county, which is fine, we all have worked with the planners for a long time. And they said, what do you want? And she said, well, I think, you know, she was licensed by the state for a group home up to 48 people, but she said, I think 24 is enough. So unfortunately, it was just an arbitrary number that, that was, that was presented because she wasn't counseled to, to consider flexibility in the way that they operate or the size based on what the property can actually reasonably serve. And so when she came to me last year, about, about a year ago, it was like, what, I'm, what can I do? You know, this, this process, this juvenile group, group home is, is, it's killing me. And so I did an analysis to show her all the different things she might do and, and this is the, the minor change of what we could do. And, and it just is to increase it to 45, which is, we did an engineering analysis of all the different public facilities or private facilities located onsite, happy to explain any of that, but it will, that's exactly what the property can, can hold. And we worked very closely with the county health department, CDHE, and others, Division Water Resources, CDOT, we've, we've worked through all of that and this is what the property can hold. Because they're adults primarily instead of juveniles, the impacts are going to go down. It doesn't matter how many people are going to be there, the impacts should go down, you're not going to have juveniles running away when, and being forced to call the police as mandatory reporter when they're just adults that are in an unlocked facility and they're welcome to drive away or call their friends and pick them up at any time. So that's, that's the background for what we're trying to accomplish. Happy to answer any particular questions and I'd, I'd like to have an opportunity to respond to the public comments, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Ms. King?
Hi. Is it, is it typical to have adults and juveniles in the same facility?
That's a good question, I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Come up to the podium, please.
And if not, I think I heard you say no, and if not, is there concern there and, or is there a way to mitigate the mixing for safety?
So the program itself has to apply for a license, a behavioral health license, and you are not allowed to mix juveniles and children. So there's no 18, it's 18 and older or 17 and younger. For example, when we had a kid that was going to turn 18, they had to leave on their 18th birthday and, and turn to a new adult program or go home with their parents or start, start their adult life in whatever way they have chosen. So it's, it's not allowed and it's not preferable. I mean, nobody wants kids mixed in with adults.
So does that mean that the overall use is going to change to only adults and no longer children?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, so kind of briefly seeing through the application, what changes are you going to be making for the increase in basically more than doubling the amount of people?
The, the lodge itself is already adequate. It's already set up, like we were, we were approved for 48 in the lodge now, or in the whole property, that's, I misspoke. The determining factor of how many can be in the lodge is the septic and the fire, but septic is really the only limiting factor in this case. I've been working, we have been working closely with Leah and CDHPNE and my engineer, who has come up with a plan to modify the septic system to, which is approved, well, which is not, which is preliminarily approved, as I understand it already, by the county. So the county will be watching over our septic, two septic systems, we have two septic systems.
And if I can just add, to, to be clear, that's the only significant infrastructure change that has to happen because the, the, the property is already feasible to serve that many people.
And yes, I guess I should have clarified and I do apologize, that was clearly noted in, in our agenda. I was more concerned with, as you guys are doubling your amount of guests, what provisions are you making to handle that as far as personnel? Do you intend to hire on more people, change evacuation plans?
The, so there is a standard in the licensing of how many staff you have to have per person during the day and at night. All of that is in my application, so yes, I mean, that has, that's all part of the application that I put in for both the septic and for my land use application. So yes, it, it's, and anyone running a program like this is very familiar with how many staff is needed and most programs will go above and beyond towards best practices rather than just the minimum.
And we have included more, room for more staff than is the minimum required by the state. So the idea is we're going to meet the minimum requirements by the state and the state license for the group home, but also be able to go above and beyond that with additional staff as expected.
Commissioner Slutske?
Yeah, just quickly, I, I noticed in the past, the facility was for young women only. So now is this going to be men and women or, and how are you, how would you handle separating them?
No, the standard in the industry is men or women.
So men is what you're talking about?
Currently, that's what we're talking about, but that isn't 100% decided, it could be women, but we will not mix, and it's not standard practice in the industry to mix men and women unless you can really separate them. Like they do at Harmony, for example, they do have men and women, but the buildings are more, I understand that they, it's very easy to separate men and women there, we would, that wouldn't be so easy to do at our property.
Can I clarify something? The previous approval from 2013 doesn't specify men or women, or I guess girls or boys, I think that should be noted.
That might have been, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, but was that something related to the, the 1982?
I believe, I believe the 1982 permit was for a women's facility, if I remember correctly, but I, I do believe that the 2013 permit didn't specify girls or boys, so this was not up for changing that.
That's correct.
Shelby? Or Ms. King, sorry?
Is your plan to hang on to the property?
No, our plan is to try and sell the property, it's been for sale for three years. We do have a currently very interested client. I mean, you don't, you never know until closing. Yeah, so that, that is our plan.
Does the sale hinge on the decision, like the land use decision? And do you know their plans following the sale?
They, they're not obligated to buy this property right now and certainly, I would anticipate that they're not interested if, if, if the change is not approved because for the exact same reasons that it's been difficult to make it work for, for Chris and Erin. And so I'm conjecturing a little bit there, but I think that's a pretty obvious thing. And of course, and you know, we need to be able to have the opportunity, Chris needs to be able to have the opportunity to operate this program regardless of whether it were to sale, sell, if it didn't sell, she needs to be able to operate and that's why we're requesting the change.
Yeah, if we are prepared to operate the program ourselves with adults instead of children, if it does not sell.
And, and if it's of any value, the interested entity is in this business. This is not somebody, this is not my brother coming into town to take over, so.
And they are, they are a known entity to us, particularly my husband knows some members, so we do know their plans and, and it's a highly regulated, regulated industry. We, we are watched from the federal level all the way down to the city level, even by the neighbors. I mean, we are highly, there's so many rules and regulations that we have to follow, there's no way you can just get away with things. These are, these are licensed in many ways, even the medical insurance companies give you a stack of rules to follow. So I, I consider us really good neighbors, actually, especially with adults, because we're so highly monitored and so watched and inspected. There's an inspection every month of some sort, whether it's in the kitchen, whether it's CDHPNE, whether it's the health department, I mean, it's, it's very, very highly regulated.
To focus back on the criteria, moving towards adults and then kind of doubling the amount of people there, do you anticipate an increased amount of traffic in and out of the property?
I don't think there's gonna, I, I think it will be pretty negligible because there's not a lot of in and out. They may be driving themselves there in the same way that they, that someone may be dropping them off, just as with, when the youth were there. But the traffic increase, if any, should be negligible. Now, we did learn that the southern access point is not permitted through CDOT and so we're working with them to, with the fire district at, at their strong suggestion to turn it into an emergency-only access point, but otherwise, there's no issue though, but we don't anticipate any significant increase. These are not people who are in and out every day.
No, in fact, they, most of them will probably be dropped off, given the, you know, they're, it's better actually to not have your car, just for self-discipline and to stay with the program, so most people don't bring their car. And they also, if they go to the doctor, they would be brought, for example, if they went to the dentist in Estes Park, they would be brought by a staff member. So they're not, even though they're adults, they're not kind of wandering around. So, they're not, even though they're adults, they're not kind of wandering around. They're not in and out. They're not, you know, they're not wandering around. They're in group, they're in therapy, they're, they're, they're doing their program, they're working their program. Their twelve steps, whatever it may be, um, all day and night. They generally don't. In fact, less though, because with the kids, we took them on field trips. This is not, generally with adults, it's not a field trip oriented kind of, kind of thing.
Okay, so, my previous question is on the use of the buildings that are currently for residential only. And I know that there was a question and then there was a clarification, but then the question felt like it still existed, which is the current use versus intended use at some point. And so, is it your plan then to ask for a change in use when that is appropriate, or are you asking for that now?
So, what we're asking for is the flexibility to use those structures in either capacity, right? So, that's a building permit issue, right? If, whether a home is used as a residence or as an office is something that, um, is addressed through the building permit process, right? It changes the classification of the building and there may be changes that have to be made. For example, if it's used as an office, you can't have a bathtub and shower and things like that. And so, the idea would be, uh, because it doesn't really matter whether it's this house, this house, or this house that's an office versus this house and this house as a residence. We wanted to allow some zoning flexibility that can still be addressed. The primary concern there is the building code. And we would do that. Uh, we would not use, and I think we have a condition of approval on there, but, uh, we would not use that structure, that building, in violation of the use that is authorized by that building permit. So, that's how we presented it, because realistically, the impacts, um, off-site are identical, if any, regardless of whether the, the office is over there or over there. And the reason that it's kind of different is because these are not identical homes, right? Small home, bigger home, duplex. So, it makes sense, like, maybe staff, if we have two staff instead of three, we're going to put them over here in this two-bedroom instead of a three-bedroom and we'll make their, you know, they're going to live there, or they're going to be an office over here. That's why we were trying to add some flexibility to make that determination on how each particular structure is used, um, once we staff up, things like that.
Okay. And then my other question is kind of to the, well, it was kind of thrown in, in this conversation there, but it's a rehabilitation facility, correct?
Well, people are, yes, people are, it's a healing facility where people are going through recovery. Yes.
So, at no point in time, because it wasn't really answered, would you have residents, clients, guests, that are committed to being there through the judicial system?
No.
It's not a locked facility. I mean, if.
It doesn't have to be if it's probation, right? Like, it can be a condition of probation to, to complete this program, which then kind of becomes an institutional use, even though they're free to leave.
It's, it could, it's more that maybe a judge would say you can go to treatment or to lessen your sentence. I mean, I don't, I don't, what I can say is, yes, there will be people in recovery that have priors, like, you know, they got caught with eight ounces of marijuana or more because, with intent to deal, or multiple DUIs. But not, um, not criminals, not sex offenders, not violent people. People who are voluntarily choosing, whether, I mean, as far as them having a completely clean record, I, I, I'm sure.
That, that isn't really my question, like, I mean,
Okay.
I don't, most people that are in that kind of a struggle tend to find themselves on the wrong side of something at some point, or they don't find themselves at your door, right? There's this bottom point. My question to you is, if any of those people who are in your facility are in there as any form of condition while currently under the supervision of probation, parole, whatever, because it doesn't need to be a locked facility for it to be a condition, but that is a different type of use, which is what this was kind of talking about in here, and there never seemed to be a very clear answer on that.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't aware. Um, we have never had somebody with that type of condition. So, if that's not allowed, if you're saying that's not allowed, that will be followed. That would be, if that's what you're saying, we, that's, you can't do that. So, I, I.
I think, I think the idea here is, you know, people come from different circumstances and they end up there. It's really a matter of what, what does Chris do, if that's the case, and she doesn't do anything. If they walk away, they walk away and they, they don't meet the obligations of whatever got them in there in the first place. But she's not calling the police and things like that.
I, is what you're saying, though, is that, that the land use would be different because it would be considered an institutional setting?
Yes.
And so, they're, just because they are treating, like, that would be a, a
Right.
treatment facility. So, I think, is, does that, is there a distinction there in the land use?
The, on page twenty-six of the packet, it talks about an I-one use versus an R-one use of custodial care. Custodial care would be anybody that is in your program as a condition of any judicial action. And so, that is why the question, I'm being asked. It's a different kind of zone or use.
Um, if I can have a quick moment, what page was that on?
It's twenty-six in my packet. Probably not helpful to you.
There's me.
I, I believe that.
Oh, twenty-nine, I'm sorry. And it's from, um, Eric Freed, the building official.
Yeah, so, absolutely. So, this is what we were talking about as far as the different building permits that may be necessary depending on the use. To be clear, that is not a zoning distinction, even though it uses language, it sounds like it. That's a building code classification. So, if you're going to go build a commercial structure, there, you know, the building official is going to ask you, what are you doing in here? Do you have retail, is there a retail restaurant? Is there retail customers? Is it just warehousing? And there's a different, uh, classification in the building code for each of those types of uses. So, that's what Eric Freed, the building official, was saying is you got to have the right building permit for each, for the use that's in each building. But to be clear, it's not an industrial zone, uh, use. It's a, just a building code requirement.
Okay, so, is it your intention to have an occupancy approved for people in custodial care?
It's not custodial care. Under the building code is.
I'm reading it right here.
Okay. Well, I don't think that there's any custodial care that's required, that's anticipated here. That's like where they're locked in is, uh, my understanding from, from, uh, coordinating with, uh, Mr. Freed. Although, it, it, I don't want to speak for him, but my understanding of custodial care is primarily they're locked in. So, and that's not the intent of this facility.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, if you tell us something's not allowed, then it won't be done. So, there's.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, and I, we, yeah.
To, to follow that line of questioning too, it, if there ever was the intent to have that type of clientele, you would be required to come back to the b- building permitting process to have those type of clients in there.
At, at a minimum, absolutely.
Understood.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. I did respond to Eric Freed's questions. I don't know if you can see that, um, during the process.
I did. Thank you for answering my questions.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
Uh, just one quick one. I'm going to tie on to what Commissioner Duffy threw out as well. Um, I was trying to pull it up, couldn't get Google Earth to get it up quick enough, but pretty familiar with that area and, um, I, I do have just a small concern here. So, um, having had some, some personal experience and, and family members that have been in places like this, um, Sundays, a lot of visitors coming in and out to see these people. Um, knowing that highway and how busy it can get in between the months of, of May and October, you know, have you guys pursued any sort of traffic mitigation to, to look at that? You know, I, I do know, you know, for Jellystone, again, they kind of had a wider shoulder allowing for vehicles to pull off, knowing that they're going to have the, the campers coming in and out of there. Again, I, I think where, where Commissioner Duffy was going with that is I have to slightly disagree that, that you guys really don't think there'll be a, a lot of visitors coming in and out on certain days and, and possibly having accidents as the people flood out of Estes Park on Sunday headed back to the Front Range.
I, and I don't, uh, disagree with you, Commissioner. I mean, traffic is what it is. I guess I would just say that, um, we don't anticipate that there's going to be a significant increase as a result of that. Again, this is an operating facility and has been for, um, at least three decades, um, in this capacity. And so, we, you know, we obviously sent the referral to CDOT and, uh, they didn't, they didn't have any concerns with, with that. Um, so, again, they, they did have concern with this apparently unpermitted southern access point. We are working to address that.
And on the, the actual pullout is on our side of, it's in front of my property. The pullout, um, for the, that you're, I think, you could see it if you saw it on Google Earth. So, we do have a pullout. And visitors tend to come here and there, not, not necessarily just on Sunday. Um, so, and a lot of clients also come from out of state. Um, so, yeah, I, I don't see it as much different than what we had before, and we did talk to CDOT and they, they don't have concerns. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, you guys can have a seat. Thank you.
Could we have the owner introduce herself for the record, please?
Sorry, I'm Christine Porta. Um, I.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, we will open the public hearing on this item. Commenters are allowed three minutes to provide testimony on an item. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak to this proposal? Please step to the podium, state your name, and then please spell your last name for the record.
We did have a sign-up sheet for this, um, so we do have a little bit of a list.
Oh. I unanticipated that. I apologize.
Um, up first, we have Rick Spear, followed by Kelly Thompson. You're on deck.
Good evening, uh, my name is Rick Spear. Last name is spelled S.P.E.A.R. Uh, tonight I'm here as a representative of DIV HTR Estes Park LLC. Mouthful there, but that's the current owner of, uh, fifty-four ninety-five U.S. Highway thirty-six. Property operating is Jellystone Park of Estes. Well, the current ownership dates from two thousand twenty-one, but my involvement with Jellystone Park of Estes goes back to nineteen ninety-seven as a former owner and operator. During this time, our experience with the property located at fifty-five thirty-two U.S. Highway thirty-six has been a mostly positive experience, but not without issue. Prior to the two thousand thirteen special review process, Jellystone Park of Estes experienced no issues stemming from the operations as a home for women and children. Once the residential treatment facility for youth began operating, we did encounter some issues. In two thousand sixteen, there was a short period of issues over two nights directly related to multiple residents at the treatment facility. These incidents resulted in theft and damages not only to Jellystone Park facilities, but also theft and damage to guest belongings and equipment in the campground. The charges included burglary, criminal mischief between a thousand and five thousand dollars, and trespass with intent to commit a crime and were brought against several of the residents that were attending the treatment program. The residents from the program essentially broke into and entered the main registration office and store in which they stole merchandise and vandalized the facility. The residents also entered staff vehicles and guest vehicles, discharging fire extinguishers, keying, keying vehicles and causing other damage. Tires on bicycles were slashed and other campground property was vandalized. While the response from the staff at Fire Mountain after these events was appropriate, including increased security measures, oversight and communication, had the Fire Mountain Residential Treatment Facility not been there, I don't believe this would have ever taken place. This was only such time a major event took place. Other minor events over the years would include residents leaving the facility in which Fire Mountain staff would notify our staff at Jellystone Park. Of course, we then increased patrols to look for these individuals who ran away to ensure a repeat of the twenty-sixth events, the twenty-sixteen events did not unfold. This caused a burden on the Jellystone staff to be vigilant during these times. As you're aware, based on community feedback, there continues to be a concern that if a residential treatment facility is allowed to operate at an increase in capacity and across any age group, that Jellystone Park, along with other community members, will encounter these same types of issues moving forward. When people choose to leave the treatment program, we worry that will, they will end up at Jellystone Park looking for a place to go or, uh, somewhere other than the treatment facility. Unfortunately, the presidents, or the presence of the treatment facility at fifty-five thirty-two Highway thirty-six has not been neutral. Jellystone Park has suffered loss in the past and this had to increase security when the program was running. The ownership group of Jellystone Park of Estes is opposed to the changes requested by Barichain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Thompson, you're up, followed by Tony Brown.
Hi, my name is Kelly Thompson, Kelly with a Y. Um, first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak in behalf of Jellystone Estes Park. Um, as the general manager of the facility and the family-oriented resort, my utmost responsibility here is to make sure that the safety and well-being of all of our guests are my top priority. My primary concern with the proposed land use change is its potential effect on the security and overall safety of the park. The approval could lead to an increased amount of nearby activity, traffic, possibly bringing, like, unintended consequences um, that may compromise the safety and the safe environment that we currently offer. In response, we would be compelled to evaluate the likely implement, like, a twenty-four-hour security coverage system, something that we do not currently require. This would not be like a minor adjustment. It does involve things such as a significant investment in the upgraded security systems, hiring and training the dedicated security personnel. A long-term commitment to increase the operational oversight is a big thing that would take a hit on us. Um, these steps, while necessary to maintain guest safety, represent a, like, a financial impact to our operation. Um, if incidents were to occur due to increased activity in the surrounding area, it could adversely affect not just our reputation as a trusted and secure destination for families. It's just not a business concern at this point. It's more of the character of the park and the trust our guests do place in us. In closing, I respectfully ask the commission to consider the operational and financial implications for Jellystone Park regarding security as part of your evaluation of the land use response. We are committed to being good neighbors and active members in the Estes Park community, but also have to protect the integrity of the safe, family-friendly environment that defines the Jellystone Park brand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Brown, you're up, and she is the last person who signed up in advance.
Hi, good evening. Tony Brown, T.O.N.I. I'm sure you know how to spell Brown. I am here representing a neighbor. I am the neighbor. I am the immediate neighbor to the West and share a property line, um, with, with the, um, um, facility. And I have to tell you, I think about a lot of what they've done is clearly a good thing. Um, there have been issues. There have been issues with trespassing. And if you even look at, at the county map or at, at Google Earth, you can see that there's literally a trail from there, from there, the residence hall, clear up through, um, my property. And we closed the fence and we put up no trespassing signs. And it still happens, even though it's not a facility today, it's just a rental place. It still happens. People come through. And that does worry me. And I have to tell you, that worries me more with more people and with adults and even more so that it's focused solely on men. So, I'm about four tenths of a mile, an easy walk from there to town is where my house is. I am a full-time resident. We have animals. My son is there, my younger son. And I, I am concerned about safety. And I am concerned about keeping the residents out of my property and making sure that we're safe on a regular basis. So, those are my primary concerns and I hope, um, you understand how seriously I take that. I have owned that property for forty years at this point. And I would be really, um, sad to not feel safe there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Do we have anyone online? Do we have anyone online?
If there are any members of the public online who would like to speak on this issue, please use the raise your hand function or star nine now. We have no hands raised.
Thank you so much. So, with that, we will close the public hearing on this item. The applicant will now have approximately five minutes to make a rebuttal and answer any questions brought up during the public testimony.
All right. Thanks for hearing us out again, and, and thank you to the public for their comments. We've been listening. We hear them. And, and, you know, obviously, there, there's some negative comments about what we are proposing. I will point out that two of the three speakers did provide some positive comment about Chris and Erin, and that's, I think it is indicative of who they are since they've been doing this. To be clear, you know, the, the, the concerns about safety, I understand that. I think that, you know, when, when people live out in the mountains, they have this expectation of the way things are going to be. I do still think that this is going to have a decrease in impact. I mean, because it's primarily adults, it's probably always going to be adults. And, and adults, they're not going to be getting, they're not going to be getting drunk and high on, on the facility, right? They're going, they're not going to be walking across the highway like a juvenile would. You know, I understand that that was just based on what Mr. Spear said, a one-time thing in 2016. Chris can tell you how she responded to it, because I know that there were significant changes that she made to the property and, you know, alarms and things like that to make sure that it never happened again. But again, we don't anticipate that being an issue because these are adults. And so, I want to make sure you have an opportunity to, to respond as well, Chris.
To that in particular. Yeah, the, the incident that happened with Jellystone was unfortunate. We did increase security by putting screens on the windows, which are still there that are, if you push on the screen and try to get out, there's an alarm that goes off, increased motion sensors, increased cameras and such. I mean, most of the kids and, and adults are more of a danger to self than others. The kids wanted to get away because they didn't think they were allowed to leave, which actually they were. Adults are coming into a healing center because they want to get better. As far as the trespassing, I was not aware until Toni told me recently that that was the case, the trail, like, we have no reason to use their acreage. We have 40 acres of our own. So, we have a trail and we have adequate space. And we, we have no rea-, like, we don't want to be bad neighbors. We don't want, if we're crossing into her, her property, either we didn't know it or if she would told us. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want any of that. I want the neighbors to be happy. There was an incident where someone from our property a couple of weeks ago walked up, got turned around and ended up on their road and was confronted, and he apologized. I sent the apology the other day to the neighbors, and I, I apologized profusely. Like, we don't, we don't need the property. We understand that people want boundaries on their property. And again, every facility is required to have a lot of security. So, I don't anticipate, I mean, we've been there for 12 years. I haven't met most of the neighbors. I guess I was, just had my head down, and I assumed if they had problems, they'd come, come to meet me, come ask, what are you doing here? Can I learn more about it? A total of three people did that in, in 12 years. So, in retrospect, I wish I had reached out more. I wish I had been part of the group that they have talked about that look after each other. I just, my husband and I had our heads down to focus on our program did not, other than with Jellystone, that other people even noticed us. So, yeah, in retrospect, I, I wish I had created rapport and bonds with the, with the neighbors. I just, I just didn't know they were worried about it until very recently.
And I would address the, this idea that there's going to necessarily need to be this giant new security program on the Jellystone campground. I, I just don't think that that's a, a necessary response to now having, you know, to one significant incident that occurred nine years ago and with a couple of juveniles, and we're talking about it who do not have the same motivation. I, I understand the concern, but these are necessary programs. This has been operated well for a long time, that it will continue to be. And we're requesting your, requesting your approval.
Thank you. If you guys will just hold on for one second. Do any commissioners have any further questions for the applicant? Ms. King?
Thanks for all of that, and, and I think it's great what you're doing with your property. Is there, I know you can do whatever, you know, house whoever you want. If your neighbors are concerned with adult males, would you consider having a female-only facility? Is that a, is that a positive? Maybe not just in response, but to fill a need also?
I would be concerned that, that it's another unnecessary limitation. And I am the strongest feminist in my house of many women, and I am still concerned about this idea that, that there's any sort of appropriate consideration of sex or gender in a land use context. I, I'm, I'm speaking for myself. That's not something that Chris and I have discussed. I just think, you know, saying it can only be for women or men is problematic from a land use perspective. But I, I, I understand. I'll let Chris speak for herself.
I mean, I, it depends on the need of the community. It's, I haven't seen a difference in, I mean, the, the people in these programs aren't generally the ones committing crimes, whether they're men or women. I would certainly actually would like to run a women's program, but I don't, I don't see a difference. I understand the perception because men are, have more physical power. I totally get that. But in terms of the industry at large, it's, there's really not really a difference. I think the more important thing is that you keep men and women separate, and this is a property that's harder to do that. So, certainly would consider it. Would like to not be limited to that. That can be limiting.
And what about the fence? A fence for the trail that your neighbor, would that be a possibility?
Absolutely. I mean, if, if, I mean, we hiked with the kids a lot, so I was not aware. I honestly was not, because if Toni, if I was aware of that, which she made me aware of it recently, would absolutely do whatever it takes. These are, we're the kind of people, and people in this industry are the kind of people that, if somebody was threatening Toni, we'd be right there. Like, the 12-step is give back, you know? I mean, I think it's hard to know this if you're not in it, but people in this industry tend to be very compassionate, kind, and it's a great business to work in because it's different than other businesses. It's not cutthroat. I mean, if she were scared, I would do whatever it took to help to, and so would, and I know so would other people in this industry. So, we're not wanting to provide, to have some edgy, dangerous culture, dangerous program. And we would expect that you would not want us to, and so would the neighbors. It's a healing center, and that's the goal. Thank you.
Commissioner Sladsky?
Can I ask what the consequences were for you, for your business in 2016 when you had, what I can call an incident, but I think that might be downplaying it? What were the consequences legally, liability-wise? And then maybe for the division, what, what happens when, when these kind of incidents happen and maybe, you know, multiple times? What, what happens to permits and such and just legal stuff?
I, I will answer the second question first, but it's, and you can, you can follow up on that as needed, Chris. But this is a state-licensed facility, so I'm sure that that goes into the continuation of your state license, correct? If you have criminal activity occurring?
Oh, so if there is anything like that, there is an investigation done by the state or the county or whoever's, it's in Colorado, the state oversees the license. So, an investigation would be done and evaluated. We, we did not have a specific consequence for that. I, I would have expected the biggest consequence would have been for Rick Spear to sue us, and he kindly did not do that. But there wasn't, the, the consequences were for the kids. The details of what they had to, I mean, they were asked to leave the program, so they didn't stay, the kids that were involved. That was, that was their consequence. As far as if they had any legal consequences after they left, they wouldn't have, I wouldn't have known that. Does that adequately answer your question?
Well, I, yes, and I appreciate that. I, I just wonder, you know, what, what's the worst thing that could happen to you? I mean, if neighbors really were upset enough to call police, to ask to have your license revoked, is that possible? What, what do, what can the, the neighbors do? I'm not asking them to do it, of course, but-
The neighbors can, can report anything they want to the state or the county. And then if the county is, the county can then notify us, and that's public knowledge. You can find that information if somebody makes a complaint. And then they, as I said, the licensing board or the county or whoever is the appropriate body to deal with whatever the complaint was, can do an investigation, and then they can implement consequences against your license or against your person, you yourself, against a staff member, against whoever. It just depends on the situation. But again, because we're so highly monitored, you don't get away with anything. I mean, not that people in this industry want to get away with anything. They want to heal. But, yeah, so there's, of the multiple oversight agencies, they can even report to the medical insurance if they think we're doing something wrong. So, the public, the neighbors can always make a report. Of course, we would like them to come to us then first and give us a chance, but they, they don't, it's, it's completely confidential. They don't even have to tell me or anyone else that they're making a report.
And I would just jump in really quickly. This is Christine Luckerson with the County Attorney's Office. This board, if there is a, we don't have the ability to place conditions based off criminal activity. We don't have the ability to tack on like an additional punishment to a criminal activity. We have the ability to condition the use commencing on proper licensing being in place, but we don't have, we would not be able to justify, is my, my guidance to you all, a condition based off potential future criminal activity that may or may not happen?
Thank you. Commissioner Rowe?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think I'm sure we're all feeling sensitive to this security-
Patrick, we can't, Patrick, we can't hear you. You're, we have a, a lot of feedback on your microphone.
Sorry, guys. I'd like to be in a bad spot.
Yeah, you're breaking up so much, it's really hard to understand what you're saying at all.
Thanks.
Okay. So, does anyone else have any questions? No?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to reiterate, because I think we've had some members of the public join us late online, and I do believe they may, they're seeking to make comment, but I just want to reiterate that public comment is now closed. And so, we aren't taking any more public feedback on this matter at this time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. You guys can have a seat.
Thank you. But there will be a county commissioner here.
Does staff have any follow-up to public comment that they wanted to add at all?
I do not.
Thank you. Do, do any commissioners have any further questions for staff? Okay, well, we can move on to our deliberations. Does any commissioner have any comment they wish to make?
I do just really quickly. I know that some of the comments and questions here pertain to the operation of the facility. That's not in the purview of the land use code and what we're making a decision on here tonight. So, whether it's a men's facility or a women's facility, although that is a legitimate concern, that is governed by another agency, most likely the state operating permit. What we're looking at here is land use code issues, septic tank, water, and right-of-ways traffic. Those are the concerns that, that I have. The biggest one that I have is, is that traffic concern. I'm not sure or convinced the, the amount of traffic going in and out of the facility. However, I think it is an opportunity for the county to be able to get another emergency response, pullout near that facility. I think the applicant was saying that the driveway or kind of pullout that is right now has been gone, used but unpermitted, could then be used as emergency access. I think that's an opportunity to increase, through the land use code, the operability of that actual piece of land and provide better security access around there. As it pertains to some of the things as far as safety is concerned, these facilities are always hard to permit. There's always concerns from the community. However, one incident in 12 years with youth vandalism, I think, is a pretty good track record. And I don't foresee that increasing with switching over to an adult population, male or female. So, tonight, I am inclined to support this effort.
Thank you. Any further comments from commissioners?
Thank you. Again, great job with your presentation and appreciate the locals' input on this as well. I, I definitely agree with Commissioner Duffy as well, with the same concerns being traffic being the number one. I, I do commend you that it sounds like you've done a great job keeping your facility upgraded with being to where this is transitioned to adding these folks, regardless if it's youths or adults. I think that's great. The other piece to it too is it sounds like you're willing to make whatever upgrades are needed to, to accompany that. So, on the land use side, again, I'm inclined to support that. Even though that is our primary role, I do feel there is a human factor involved in this. And again, that firsthand knowledge that I have with this is generally people that are there want to be there, and if they make a decision to not leave, they're probably going to get as far away from there as possible and go about making whatever decisions those are. Again, siding with Commissioner Duffy or agreeing with him, you know, youths that are there, maybe they were allowed to be there or forced to be there, remains to be seen. But again, I feel that the adults, men or women, would probably be less inclined to do damages they were leaving there. Again, I think you guys have done a great proposal. No one ever wants these types of facilities close to them, and they have to be somewhere. I think it would be a beautiful place for folks to try to maybe correct or try to improve their lives. So, I'm inclined to support it.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Oh, Commissioner Sladsky?
Thank you. I, I would, I would agree with Commissioners Sullivan and Duffy. But I, I really do understand the neighbors' concerns, and I think it's admirable that they haven't really pursued any, any, any complaints legally. And they, I don't know, for me, that just means they were, they at one point at least were given, given this facility, you know, a chance, and I would hope they would do so. I do think adults are a lot easier to, to manage than, than juveniles. And I have some personal experience with being close to a, a treatment facility when, when I had a business near Wellington and actually hired some of the clients there. And, and for, all I could see is these were just troubled guys. They were all men looking to get better, and, and clearly, they all didn't get better. But while they were at the facility, they were, they were great neighbors. I hired two or three of them. They were good employees. I hired two or three of them, they were good employees, and so, I think that, you know, just listening to, you know, the presentation here, I think that there's good chance for this to have success, and hopefully, both the neighbors and the owner will interact, you know, maybe have a softball game, or a picnic. I'm not, maybe half joking, but that's what neighbors do. And so, I'm thinking, everybody needs to give everyone else a chance, and I will support this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, and I'll just add my two cents here, which is, I agree with Commissioner Slutske, particularly on the last thing that he said. I think often, the land use and the technical things that we're permitted to look at, or required to look at, depending on your point of view, to make decisions, don't often offer a human side of that, whether it is the applicant, and their desire to do good in the world, as in this case, or the neighbors, and someone wanting to feel safe, that isn't a lot of what we get to consider. And so, I would just encourage the applicant to meet with your neighbors. There are, I'm very familiar with the property that you own, from many, many years ago, before you owned it, and so, I would encourage you to talk to your neighbors, to see how you can work collaboratively together, whether that's informing your clients as to where they should not go for Ms. Brown's property, and really emphasizing that, or whatever, it isn't anything that we can dictate to you. But, from a land use standpoint, I encourage you to follow all of the things that are on there. It is to your benefit, is to the benefit of those you wish to serve, and to, hopefully, be very successful, whether you retain the property or you choose to sell it. And I'm not hesitant to support this, but I am mindful of the impact that it does have on the people around you, and there's an opportunity to work together and demonstrate to your future clients that it is possible to build a community that is supportive of people who are trying to get on the right side of their lives. So, that's all I have to say on that. Can I get a motion on this, please?
I'll make a motion.
You gonna read it?
What's that?
You want to read the motion?
Oh, I don't have it pulled up, sorry.
It's on your screen in front of you.
I may, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review file number 25-Zone 3789, subject to the following conditions. The following conditions supersede and replace all previous approvals. The site shall be developed consistent with the approved plan and with the information contained in the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review file number 25-Zone 3789. Except as modified by the conditions of approval or agreement in the county applicant, the applicant shall be subject to all other verbal or written representations, comments of record for the Bear Tribe LLC amended special review. This amended special review approval shall automatically expire without public hearing, and the use is not commenced within three years of date of approval. Failure to comply with the conditions of the amended special review approval may result in reconsideration of the use and possible revocation of the approval by the Board of County Commissioners. This application is approved without the requirement of development agree. The facility shall operate under the following conditions: no more than 45 residents be allowed, no more than 12 horses will be allowed, and their use will be limited to equine therapy for participants in a residential program. The applicant shall provide Laramie County Health Department with formal derating determination document from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Still...
I think maybe you could just say, conditions 1 through 20.
1 through 20. You could have stopped me a long time ago.
Well, you were talking really fast, so it was kind of...
Ms. Luckerson is...
I looked at the council and gave it nod, so I didn't get it.
That's sufficient, we're good.
Can I get a second, please?
A second.
A roll call, please.
Rowe? Okay. Weiss?
Yes.
Eggleston?
Yes.
Slutske?
Slutske?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Only if I can read 1 through 20 again, yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Cholet?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to our second agenda item, which is USS Welch Solar Facility 1041, file number 25-Zone 3793, and we'll begin with a staff presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Bennett, I'm the environmental planner for Laramie County. I was going to speak about 1041 regulations in general before we dive in. This derived from a House bill in 1974, and it was designed to allow local governments or municipalities a seat at the table when it came to projects that were a little larger, and had statewide concerns. So, it regulates areas and activities of state interest. A unique thing about a 1041 process is that it mandates a 90-day timeline or a shot clock, so that's a very short amount of time to do most of these steps that you see on the screen. Once an application is deemed complete, then the staff has to review, all the items have to go out for external review, public input is received, and then it goes to the Planning Commission, which is us tonight, and then it has to go to the land use hearing with the county commissioners. If an application gets approved, I want to point out that outside of that 90-day period, it goes to technical review, where a lot of details are worked out, and other permitting requirements, too. Okay, so, tonight, we're at the Planning Commission hearing, this is a chance for the applicant to make their presentation, staff gives a presentation, and the public gets a chance to give their opinion as well, and the commissioners make a recommendation to the county commissioners, and they make the ultimate decision. So, if we go to this particular application, it's requesting a 1041 permit review. It qualifies for 1041 because in the county's land use code, it's based not on the size of the facility in terms of power generation, but in terms of amount of disturbance. So, this project has, it impacts 28 acres, not all of that is solar panels, but the facility in general covers 28 acres of a 29.3-acre site. Here's a map to help orient everybody, that's Highway 287, and this parcel is in the bend of 287. The handy ditch, the map says, the home supply ditch, but the handy ditch runs through the property on the west side. Burlington Northern Railroad is on off-site just to the west. And I did want to point out that there's Midway Acres Neighborhood subdivision, second filing right there, but immediately north is the Flying R Ranch, which is in a questioning The property is owned by Mary Schwartz. The applicant is United States Solar, or US Solar. I went over area already. Surrounding land uses are rural residential, and the town of Berthoud, this is in the town of Berthoud's Growth Management Area, or GMA. There's agricultural land on the other side of 287, to the east and the south. Zoning is RR2. Main access for the proposed project would be from Hogwild Road, which is in the far northeast corner, and the secondary access on South Iowa Avenue. There is no domestic water supply, and during construction, workers would purchase water, and the same with sewer, they would have temporary toilets, just for construction. Afterwards, there is no toilet facilities. It's in the Berthoud Fire Protection District. And, some additional background, this project did come to the county in 2023, there was a neighborhood outreach, it was deemed complete, it went to Planning Commission, but it was withdrawn by the applicant in October 23 because of some coordination issues with Excel Energy. But they reapplied in May of this year, and now we're here. These are some visual simulations that the applicant has provided. In the top-left corner, this would be the main access road from Hogwild, and in the lower-middle, that would be from the extreme southwest corner, looking northeast, so pretty much from 287 looking northeast. And then, the top-right is from the neighboring neighborhood, looking east. I wanted to include this map here to explain some of the site constraints. I mentioned the railroad, that does not really impact the site. The handy ditch bisects it, and that does impact, in that Excel Energy, they have a substation to the south of 287, and this project has to connect to that substation eventually, so the infrastructure that Excel has, they would have to install three new poles in the southwest corner. So, to access that area, and then to have maintenance afterwards, there would be a maintenance road constructed on the west side of the property, on the west side of the ditch, although most of the development is on the larger eastern portion. The red line is a sanitary sewer line and associated easement. The applicant has provided a buffer on the south side of that easement, so there is no disturbance or facility north of that easement. So, from the property line to the north, to the northernmost fence of the development is roughly 230 feet. I wanted to mark also that the Division of Water Resources indicated there is a water well, and also an oil and gas well, that's the blue and yellow dots respectively, but their databases don't always accurately portray where those wells are, so we have some ways to address this later on, but I wanted to mention that they were there, but not likely to have large impacts. So, when the applicant provided their application, they submitted all of these items, these are all the plans and studies, and then, staff then referred that out to all of the referral agencies. These are the ones that were referred, and some of them are internal to the county, some of them are other state organizations, some utilities, other municipalities, and fire departments. Little Thompson Water District did provide a very late comment, which we did include in addendum earlier. These are the agencies that did not provide comments. So, there are also some strict noticing requirements. The county sent out postcards to properties and property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property. There is a physical posting on the county building, the, this building here, it was also posted on the Laramie County's website. There was a press release in the Loveland Herald Reporter. It was also open for comment on the public engagement, publicinput.com website, that was on, the address of which was on the postcard. There's also two newspaper articles, one in the Loveland Herald Reporter, and the Berthoud Weekly Surveyor. Generally, I won't go dive into super detail on all of these, but what we heard from referral agencies, that there were some requests, the conditions of approval, some issues to resolve, specifically from the county engineering department and the health environment, county health environment. The town of Berthoud had some concerns, and also the Department of Transportation, since they are, you know, they have the highway right next door. For a while, we only had two public comments, but then over the weekend, we received quite a few more, so we were up to 28 comments. Some were for, some were against. Generally speaking, those concerns included the effect of facility on nearby homes, potential issues from the Clinton glare, the choice of land use versus other land uses, potential impacts to property value, and perceived impacts, or I should say, potential impacts to the questioning facility. Every 1041 application that comes in has to be reviewed against 22 general review criteria. The 1041 permit process is one of the more strict review process that the county has. You can loosely group them into different themes here, but they're looking to mitigate potential impacts to adjacent properties, to environmental resources, to public safety, making sure that it aligns with planning efforts, whether that's the county or other municipalities, and it aligns with intergovernmental agreements, those are IGAs. More generally, to the Article 4 development standards, hazards, and also referral, other referral agencies' concerns. There are also some specific review criteria, obviously, those are different for something like a reservoir versus a solar facility, but there are some specific review criteria for electric power plants, which a solar facility is. I didn't want to read through all of those, of those review criteria, but I did want to call attention to a handful of them. Engineering identified potential impacts from construction traffic, where material will be hauled in, the Midway Acres roads are not currently in the best condition, so they were concerned about further impacts. Some efforts were made to coordinate with Excel to downsize the required secondary access road, and thereby reduce the amount of traffic going from there. And there's more conversations to be had, I think, and conditions of approval listed there, that you have in the staff report, try to address that as well. Another one is the stormwater management, there is some stormwater generated, and CDOT will only accept historical flows. So, the detention pond is sized in such a way as to reflect those historical flows, and there's some specific conditions for that as well. I think with the equishing facility, there's some unique potential for impacts, different from most residence, residential properties, so there are some noise concerns, and potentially Clinton glare, we have some conditions for that, to address that. The water and oil and gas wells, it's a very kind of unknown issue at the moment, that takes them on the ground exploration to figure that out, so there's a few conditions for that. Revegetation is always a concern, so we have a condition for that as well. And the reason why we have these conditions of approval, if you go back to that mandated 90-day timeline, that's not sufficient time to adequately work out all of the details, so the conditions of approval guide that technical review process. In total, we have 41 in these various categories here, general, health, engineering, construction, permitting, and post-construction, that try to address every potential issue that we can think of. And with that, staff have found that based on a review of the submitted documentation, Article 4 and Article 10 for 1041, sorry, that the proposed application, case number 25-Zone 3793, satisfies all applicable criteria as discussed in detail in the related staff report, subject to the implementation of the conditions of approval as recommended by staff.
Questions? Go ahead. Sorry.
Can you give me, and I'm trying to think, it might be in the report, but can you give me a rough idea of how long the ditch is that is in this property?
Not off the top of my head, but I can measure it pretty fast.
No, that's fine. You talk about access for Excel, what about access for the ditch company?
That, so they have an easement along their ditch, and that easement is maintained.
Is there any discussion on undergrounding the ditch for that, that's on that facility?
Not to my knowledge. To get the main power supply to Excel's line, there would be a bore under the ditch, but that's the only undergrounding that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Sticking with the ditch company, and maybe the applicant can talk about this, in the past, we've talked on these facilities about pesticides for undergrowth underneath the solar panels. Are they planning to use pesticide for weed mitigation, or is it one of these goat farming or natural landscaping, let's call it that? Um, uh, goat farming or natural landscaping, let's call it that.
There, so right now there's a revegetation plan, um, and that is one of the things where the details can be hashed out in technical review. And uh usually an integrated pest management program looks at all methods of control, so herbicide would be one of those, but not all of that. Uh, livestock is also a potential use as well.
Uh, quickly, is the oil and gas well operational or is it plugged and abandoned?
I believe not, um, Leah with health can probably provide more.
You good? Does anyone else have any questions for staff right now? Were there any um conditions, I I was scanning again, I swear I've read this, but there's a lot of conditions. Um, that specifically address the potential impacts to the neighboring property with the equine facility?
Right now i- it's with noise, um, glint and glare would be another potential issue, which. Could be addressed with buffering of some sort, which could be different kinds. That is certainly something that can be addressed in technical review as well.
Okay, so and I, I'm literally seeking clarification, so I know in some of the staff report, it was talking about. Buffers around landscaping in terms of for the neighboring neighborhood, but then it talked about the glint and glare. And then it talked about um, uh, buffer landscaping in terms of two eighty seven and things like that, and so. That's something that would only be addressed in technical review, wouldn't necessarily be part of a condition of approval.
So the landscaping is um. It it can be a tricky one and there could be a lot of details and there could be some routes in terms of uh methods of review. Where um. It it, ah, what's the word that we used earlier? Alternate landscape plan could be provided, which is actually through the director. The planning director, so that's an administrative procedure versus one that goes to planning commissioner or county commissioners.
Okay. I'm a little stuck, sorry. Okay, so does anybody else have any questions? Okay, does the applicant have a presentation?
My name is Haley Ballantyne, um, Ballantyne is spelled with a B. All right, um, good evening commissioners and planning staff, my name is Haley Ballantyne and I'm a project developer for US Solar. Today I'm here to discuss the USS Welch project and our submission for the ten forty one permit with Laramie County. US Solar is a developer, owner and operator of solar energy generation and storage projects. We focus on emerging markets and community solar programs. What sets US Solar apart from other developers is that we don't typically develop and flip our projects. So this means that we own and operate our projects for the long term and for their entirety of their useful life. So US Solar currently owns and operates eleven community solar projects in the state of Colorado, ranging from two to five megawatts AC. And US Solar has been developing projects in Colorado since twenty eighteen. So today I will review some of the project background and the benefits. And I'll dive into some additional details about the location of the project and why it's well suited for solar. And then I'll also talk about our approach to development in light of some of the community uh goals and the surrounding land uses. So the USS Welch project was first introduced to the county planning staff in twenty twenty three. And at that time, the project has, was approved by the planning commission, but was withdrawn prior to receiving BOCC approval. Due to some programmatic constraints with Excel Energy, so the project has since been on hold. In twenty twenty four, the state of Colorado passed Senate Bill two oh seven, the goal of which was to expand access to renewable energy. Both programs approved under this legislation were designed for solar projects that are less than or equal to five megawatts AC. Which in the solar industry is commonly referred to as distributed generation. For context, a five megawatt solar project takes up about twenty five to thirty acres of land. USS Welch is two megawatts, so the solar panel area for this project will take up about twelve point three acres of land. Next slide please. So distributed generation projects have a number of benefits, the first is that instead of generating energy for the transmission system. To be sent far away across state lines, they connect directly to the local distribution system. This means that the energy generated by the project is used directly by the homes, businesses and other energy consumers in the area. It is likely that USS Welch will also be a community solar project. This means that in addition to providing clean energy directly to the grid. The same consumers can subscribe to the project for a discounted rate and receive credits on their energy bill. Additionally, these sites, these locally sighted projects establish native pollinator habitat and grasslands. The mix we will be using for USS Welch is specifically formulated for this region of Colorado. And is designed to improve soil conditions over the project lifespan. Lastly, these projects provide a great opportunity for community education and sustainability. We often host small community events at our projects to help communicate the edu- communicate and educate with the public the benefits of solar. Grazing sheep on our sites offers a great opportunity for farmers and ranchers to benefit as well. Next slide please. So this site was specifically chosen due to its proximity to Excel distribution lines and the Berthold Substation just to the south. The site also has a flat topography, no onsite wetlands, and it sits outside of any flood plains. The land is being leased by US Solar from the current landowner. The landowner is part of a family of local farmers who have called this area home for several generations. When C dot expanded Highway two eighty seven, irrigation on this site became difficult due to the risk of increasing flows into the right of way. Eventually, C dot and the landowner entered into an agreement that this parcel would no longer be irrigated. The project fence line is set back a hundred and fifty feet from the property lines on the west side of the project. And just over two hundred feet from Flying Our Ranch, which is the equestrian boarding facility located to the north. Next slide please. As an owner and operator of our projects, we take pride in being a good neighbor. And it's our job to consider how the USS Welch project can coexist with the surrounding land uses. When this project was originally brought to the county for approval, US Solar reached out to the surrounding landowners to notify them of the project. At that time, a virtual public meeting was held, to which no community showed up aside from our landowner. In September of twenty twenty five, once our application had received its notice of completeness. We again sent letters to the surrounding landowners to notify them of the proposed project. Next slide. So as we discussed, the Midway Acres neighborhood is the nearest development to the project. I received just one phone call from a landowner who receives, who, or who lives in Midway Acres neighborhood. They expressed their support for the project and said it was a preferred use over housing and other forms of urban development. We have received written comments from other residents who share the same view. Flying Our Ranch is the equestrian boarding facility located just north of the project site. US Solar met with the business owners of the ranch on October second, twenty twenty five. To provide additional information about the project and discuss their list of concerns, which I will also go through and address today. Next slide please. So first, I want to touch on noise. So the only noticeable noise um from the project will be during construction. Pile driving is little, is the loudest part of construction for a solar project. And for an array of this size, pile driving would last between seven to ten days at the most. And total construction time is about four months. Our structural contractor has equipment to measure the decibel levels of construction activities. So once construction begins, we will take onsite measurements to ensure we are in compliance with the noise ordinance during pile driving and during construction. Once the project is operational, the noise will not be noticeable to surrounding owners and does not have a negative impact on farm animals. We have animals on several of our sites already without issues, mainly sheep. And there are examples around the country of cows, pigs and chickens, all grazing beneath the panels. Next slide. So the main project access will be off of Hogwild Road. We typically construct the access roads first so that all construction traffic can be taken delivered. And all deliveries can also be taken directly onto the site. In addition to the main project access, Excel Energy will need to access the parcel on the west side of the Handy Ditch. After meeting with the county engineers and hearing some of their concerns on the construction traffic to the Midway Acres neighborhood. US Solar has begun working with Excel Energy to ensure the construction traffic is reduced as much as possible. Once the project is operating, visitation will be limited to one to two people with a pickup truck. These visits will occur bi-monthly for the first few years and bi-annually after that. Next slide. So the pro- solar project design incorporates a drainage basin on the east side of the project. The purpose of this basin is to help control any increase in runoff from the solar panels and during a major rain event. It is rare that there would actually be standing water in the drainage basin. The only time it would be full is if there were a major rain event and it would eventually drain and evaporate. As previously mentioned, the site will be seeded with a native seed mix, which greatly improves the soil's water retention. Now impacts on the Handy Ditch, the solar project is bordered by the Handy Ditch on the west side. There will be one location where we will bore underneath the ditch to run a medium voltage line from the project over to the Excel distribution lines. This line will be encased in a six inch conduit and will not impede flow of water through the ditch or impact the ditch operations in any way. The Handy Ditch does not provide irrigation to this site and there are no lateral ditches on the property. Next slide please. So glint and glare, the USS Welch project, I just want to note, is not a concentrated solar array. So this means it does not use the modules that focus reflected sunlight towards a single point. So it does not generate the high levels of glare that are commonly associated with those types of arrays. The panels that we will be using are manufactured with a two millimeter anti-glare coating. Which ensures that they absorb as much sunlight as possible rather than reflecting it. The project will also have a single axis tracker, which reduces glare even further. As the panels rotate so that they are directly facing the sun at any given time of day. Any potential glare from the solar project would be significantly less than the sun reflecting off of a glass window. We also completed a glare study on the USS Welch project in twenty twenty three to further assess the effects. On air traffic as well as any ground level viewers. The results showed that the levels of glare are well below levels that would cause afterimage effect for the viewer and therefore are not considered impactful. Now lastly, electromagnetic glare, or electromagnetic fields, um, this question of whether projects pose a risk. Um, has been well researched in several engineering research centers, as well as the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. According to the Air Force Civil Engineering Center, prior research and field investigations of electromagnetic emission or EME. From solar PV arrays concluded that they produce extremely low frequency EME, similar to electrical appliances and wiring. At a distance of a hundred and fifty feet from the inverters, these fields drop back to very low levels. Last slide. We'll go through a couple more, we can address the landscape screening at the end. For questions, um. We believe that the USS Welch project um meets all of the ten forty one permit criteria. It's been carefully designed to align with the surrounding land uses and it brings a number of benefits to the community that it serves. We would like to thank the commissioners for your time today and would like for you to approve this application, thank you. I'll take any questions as well.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
This is a, a quick one for the inverters, are they going to be individual modulized inverters on the racks? Are you guys going to have a central facility for the inversion?
Um, they will be individualized on the racks, if you go back to the ma- or I don't know if we can go back to the slides.
That, that's fine.
So there, but I do want to note that they're actually in the middle of the project, so the inverters themselves are even further away from the property boundaries.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Rowe?
Good, am I, am I any better now?
Much better.
Okay, thank you, I'm much closer to the internet now. Um, on, on this one, I was curious, so the, the, at least the initial time horizon, I think it said thirty five years. And then, you know, potentially the site could be decommissioned at that time, or I suppose you guys would replace the technology. Is um, if, so if it is decommissioned, is there, um, I know you guys will, will retain ownership of this. But is there some sort of bond or assurance that that, you know, that there's funds for that decommissioning?
I believe that the county will have a decommissioning requirement, so I think that's part of our development agreement with the county, um, will be to post the bond. And just to expand on the decommissioning as well, um, we, when it comes to decommissioning a project. All of the equipment that's on the solar project still has value, even if the project will no longer be operating. So any, so the owner of the project has a lot of incentive to decommission and take down all of the equipment. Because it does still have value at the end, so it can be utilized in various other ways, so it's. Very, very rare that a solar project like this would ever be abandoned for any reason, but that's also the purpose of the decommissioning bond.
Okay, well great, and maybe we could get staff to give us a response on that as well, but we can, you know, we can hold that for later.
I can, I can address now if you want. There, there are two other small solar projects in the county and we've gone through. Uh, uh, we do require a decommissioning plan and we use a development agreement for that. Um, and there's a process for it and there is a financial security attached to that, also some success criteria and process. So we've done it twice before and we would do the same thing for this one.
Okay, and that financial security, you guys, that gives you guys comfort that there is. At the completion of this project, that there, there would be funds there to, to take care of what needs to be taken care, taken care of.
Yes, usually that is broken up in two parts, one for the initial establishment of vegetation and then the second one for the actual. Tear down of the equipment afterwards at the end of life.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Just quickly, you don't have a thirty five year power purchase agreement in place though, do you?
We do not, the thirty five year is um, is the term of our lease agreement, um, but the power purchase agreements are typically twenty.
It's through the Excel project?
That's correct.
Anyone else have any questions right now? Can you talk to me about landscaping?
Sure, um, yeah, so the project currently has a uh landscape buffer around the entirety of the project fence. Um, so the screening is in place because of a county code section four point eight point two. Um, that requires fencing around any type of development to have landscape screening along the entirety of the fence line. Um, we have received a number of comments about the landscape screening, um, both positive and negative. Um, I think we ourselves, uh, we do have some concerns about the way the landscape screening. Would be laid out in compliance with this particular section of the code. Um, first off, the Handy Ditch Company routinely burns their ditch for maintenance. Um, they've also requested an additional twenty five feet on either side of their ditch easement to accommodate this maintenance. Um, so right now the landscape screening that's on the west side of the project would encroach on their easement as well as this twenty five foot area where they. Would like to maintain to um, perform that maintenance. Um, the Handy Ditch Company also agreed per C dot's request to utilize the project access road off of Hogwild. To come down to their existing access road that's on the south edge of the parcel. They currently access the parcel off of the Highway two eighty seven on ramp. With, the way the landscape screening is set up right now, it blocks their ability to link up with the existing access road. So that's another reason why we want to, you know, make some changes there. Um, the buffer also, it doesn't serve as an erosion or, you know, drainage BMP for the project. So functionally speaking, its only purpose is aesthetic screening from both the highway as well as any neighbors. Um, so this type of buffer, it can be very expensive both to install and to maintain. It dramatically increases the water use on the site. The vegetation that we have planned for the site right now. It's a native seed mix and so it's really designed to be totally self-sufficient in terms of water. It's, it can rely fully on rainfall and groundwater for the entirety of the project life. Whereas if you have the landscape buffer, you have to truck in water to water for the first several years. Um, we've seen a lot of difficulty with establishing trees in these types of climates and other projects in Colorado. So um, we often like to explore, you know, better alternatives to uh screening methods.
Okay, and specifically um, in relation to uh the equine property. Are you s- still trying to figure out how best to screen from them as well?
That's correct, we typically, if there is a neighbor that has, you know, some sensitive needs when it comes to um. To visual screening from a property, a lot of times it's easier to work directly with that landowner. Um, as opposed to, you know, doing the screening, which in this case it has some other um impacts to. Parties that are involved in this case, so.
Okay.
Yeah, something, it's can to typically take the form of like a good neighbor agreement, so we would, you know, compensate them for the ability to. Plant trees or something like that closer to their property, um, usually that actually screens better. Um, when it's, you know, closer to their side of um, of the property line than it is to the project fence.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, you can have a seat if you would like. So we'll now move into the public hearing portion of this. Uh, commenters are allowed three minutes to provide testimony on an item, on any item, on this specific item. I apologize. Um, do we still have a list for this?
We don't have anybody signed up for this specific item.
Oh, okay, thank you. So is there anyone that wants to speak on this item in the audience? Come on up to the podium, sir, and just please state your name for the record and spell your last name if it's not obvious.
Hi, my name is Byron Kominek, K O M I N E K. It's not usually obvious. Uh, I'm the owner and manager of Jack's Solar Garden in Boulder County. I'm a Boulder County Planning Commissioner. And um, I also run a nonprofit called the Colorado Agricultural Tech Learning Center. Uh, I, I own and operate a one point two megawatt solar array uh, just south of Longmont. I have for the past five years. My family built it. We own it. Uh, we're pretty well known for being able to integrate different types of agriculture within a solar array. We also have a large vegetative screening around the outside of the solar array. Uh, I, I always like to let people know that that is expensive and it takes a lot of time and effort to maintain it. It's something that I take pride in maintaining around my solar array. It's one of the largest ones you'll see around uh, any solar array in our area. Uh, but if it's the intention to require having a vegetative barrier around the perimeter of a solar array, it's important to have uh, have it clear like how many years somebody is going to be operating and maintaining it, because I've heard of other solar arrays where a county might do that. And then uh, it's only said that it's going to be there for two years and then right after two years, the the screening's done, like it, everything dies off because it wasn't maintained in that way. I, I, I argue against vegetative screening for the most part, especially, I think at that location, you're going to be able to see it from the road. Everybody's going to be able to see that solar ray. Everybody can see my solar ray, even though I have uh, ten foot tall elderberries around large portions of the solar array. Uh, especially because they're deciduous and they'll, they'll, the leaves die back during the winter time. There's better ways that money can be used uh, that could support county initiatives than uh, looking towards vegetative screening would be my suggestion, looking in that direction. Um, I want to, I heard uh, some talk about the glare and glint. If there was any uh, continued concerns around that one, the, the sun is always to the south and with panels being uh, flat rotating east to west, the glare is kind of always going to go up. If there was anything, there'd be no glare going to the north at, at our site. Like uh, the road is maybe four or five feet above the, the land where our solar array is. They're also single axis tracking. There is like no complaints ever around it. Uh, the panels, as the solar company mentioned, but they're designed to absorb all the light. There, it's not going to be glint enough in any directions. If the site is to be used for agricultural purposes in the future, um, I, I like to let counties know it's important to figure out how the site is going to be managed during the construction process throughout uh, or managed throughout the construction process from uh, is it going to be graded? Is it uh, how much land disturbance, how much compaction is going to be there? Because that will impact how well vegetation can grow over time. Uh, especially if you're interested in long-term growth, uh, you're going to be looking more towards perennial vegetation versus annual vegetation that will die off the moment somebody mows it down. Um, you can also look into different ways that you can um, secure wires uh, on a facility that helps keep it safe for sheep, uh, other animals and, and people that are out there, but thought it'd be a resource tonight. Cheers.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this?
We do have one member of the public who has their hands raised. Kathy and Justin Riley, you have permission to speak. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you. Uh, within your packet, hopefully you have two written submissions that we have made. Um, yes, we did speak with the applicant here, but the applicant offered us absolutely nothing to resolve the concerns that we had. And I think you've heard that from um, the relative inability to describe what sort of buffer they might put in place. Um, what's unique about an equestrian facility is the fact that horses are very unique. Um, they are much more sensitive to sound than humans are. They're much more sensitive to electromagnetic forces than humans are. Um, they're very reactionary. It's because they're predators, they, they, predators have always been um, you know, they're, they're risk. And so their response to anything that's frightening to them is to simply run. Sometimes they run completely out of control. They'll run through fence lines. They'll injure themselves. They can stress themselves enough that they can't, they, they can't breed productively. They can't perform productively. They're going to have illnesses. I mean, horses are just very distinct in nature. If you look at um, solar facilities that are built next to equestrian facilities, I asked the applicant very specifically to give me some samples so that we could reach out to those people and verify whether it works or it doesn't work. The two samples that she gave me, one was actually a horse facility that on its own decided it wanted to put in place a, a, a solar facility. They made the choice. They put it on their property. They're at risk for whatever poor decision they might have made. They aren't being victimized by having this basically thrust upon them through this permitting process. The other one was what was basically sounded like a, a backyard woman. They blacked out her name so that we can't reach out to her. But she must have been complaining about her horses receiving um, shocks through the water tank that must, that, that she must have thought was a stray voltage. Those are the two items they came up with to try to convince us that these facilities work extremely well next to horses. When you look at Europe, they are so far ahead of us um, that it, it's very astounding. The UK in particular. The UK makes it a point that they do not put solar facilities anywhere near an equestrian facility or even a hack, any area where there are equestrian trails. And it is exactly for the same reasons that we've raised in our writings, is that horses are very sensitive to the sound. What we don't even hear a horse will hear. The sound studies that the applicant provided us basically compared the sound of an inverter to that of being a commercial interstate highway that has a number of trees buffering it before it got there. And that was measured at a hundred and fifty feet. We're at two hundred feet. The horses are going to hear something.
Thank you very much for your comment.
And will you state your name for the record, please?
Able to.
I'm sorry, we, we do have.
Sorry, if I'm able to, would I be able to uh, speak also for the three minutes?
Yes, you may. I need both of you to state your names for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, my, yeah, my name is Kathy Riley. It's K A T H I E and last name is R I L E Y.
Okay, thank you.
And I am Justin Riley, J U S T I N R I L E Y.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, my biggest concern, I'm the main trainer here, and my biggest thing is that my forte is starting younger horses. And horses can hear at a seven decibel level. And uh, I didn't want to put it, the study that I was given from Haley, um, I read completely and I'll even admit, the study was very well done. But it does say, um, the, on the average length, it was still being able to hear at a forty-eight uh, decibel level, even at a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, my main concern is I have young horses who may have never even heard of even just the highway noise that we do get every now and again. But now we're going to hear a constant level of probably about that forty-eight to even forty-five decibels. I'm worried what those two-year-olds and three-year-olds are going to do, because I do compete these horses at a fraternity level where I'm hopefully making ten or more thousands of dollars at just a single show. My other concerns was from how much contradictory we had in between from Haley and Scott. That Haley told us the secondary access from Iowa Street was no longer. But now both Haley and Scott said that that will be happening. And as well, sorry, I didn't, I make a couple of points on these ones. Um, is Scott saying that they want to get this permit approval prior to the ninety day and just say, we'll work this out later uh, from the ninety day? If so, um, how does that not conflict with the permit itself? And then as well, um, what will be the technical review that will be given? Um, do we get to be part of that technical review? And do we get to access as well with that? Um, in regards to Haley saying now that the panels and everything is going to be only within twelve acres, but Scott was noting that's going to be over twenty. So I want to know, is it going to be over twenty? Is it going to be twelve? Do they actually have the specifics of what acreage amount they're going to cover? And in twenty twenty-three, when Haley noted that no one was at the meeting, we weren't notified. Uh, we didn't even get notice of this planning until this year. Uh, everybody that we asked, our neighbors that we asked, the neighbors that are on Iowa Street and Forty-third Street, uh, nobody knew that this was coming in until this year of twenty twenty-five. Um, and as well, Haley did skip over and I do admit she ran out of time. Um, but she told us that Handy Ditch said they cannot do landscaping, so AKA the trees on the Handy Ditch side. So I want to know what actual landscaping will go in.
Thank you both.
Do we have any other um, members of the public online that wish to give a comment?
If there are any other members of the public, please use the raise your hand function now. No other hands are raised.
Great. Um, does the applicant want to give a rebuttal to any of the public comment? And I guess I should note that the, um, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Okay, you can give a rebuttal, please.
Okay. Um, first, I just want to touch on the noise impacts. Um, as I mentioned, the inverters, which, and the transformers as well, which are the two pieces of equipment that make the most noise on the project. The panels themselves do not make any noise when they're, you know, creating electricity. Those are going to be located over four hundred feet from the Flying R Ranch, so those are even further from their two hundred and twenty foot buffer um, that is currently there. So they have some additional distance. Also, the decibel level that those pieces of equipment make are comparable to a lot of other electric equipment that is probably already in the area. It could be, you know, there's three-phase power lines that are in that area already as well. There's, you know, other transformers and things that are in neighborhoods like that all the time, so I don't know if it's totally fair to say that, like, there's no exposure to these types of sounds outside of just a solar array. They're comparable to a lot of other sounds that are, you know, that we hear on a day-to-day basis. Um, and then with regard to the landscape screening, I think the reason that's, the, the reason it's kind of still in flux and the reason why it's, we would like to make some amendments to it is to the Flying Orange's point that there's very specific, you know, needs here that the landscape screening as it's shown right now do not really fit. Um, I think that there's better ways to go about this if the screening is going to be used for visual impacts and noise impacts to the horses specifically on the ranch. Um, so I'll, I think that's something that we would prefer to, you know, work out with the landowner specifically. Um, so again, the reason why it's in flux and to a lot of the points that Byron made as well, it's, you know, it's expensive and there's better ways that we can spend the money to, you know, better suit the neighbors in this case. Um, and then lastly, on the handy ditch, um, again, the landscape screening on that side is within that twenty-five foot buffer um, that they want on the side of their easement, so having a landscape screening there is not totally feasible. On the access road, we, when we met with county engineering, they mentioned that the roads in the Midway Acres neighborhood are not in the best condition and that those neighbors are responsible for maintaining and upgrading their roads if it's necessary. Um, we are exploring options with Excel to potentially adjust the location of some of that equipment so that access in that area may not be needed. That change has not been made to the plans yet, but as Scott pointed out, the um, the technical review and the more building permit process is well-suited to address that type of concern and that type of issue. So it's, we're aware of it and we are taking steps to, to make sure that we're addressing all of the needs of, of these neighbors and of the Midway Acres neighborhood, because we understand that they're, you know, they're responsible for that, those types of upgrades, so any construction traffic that could cause damage is um, something we want to try to avoid.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do, does anyone have any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. You can have a seat. Um, did staff want to respond to any of the public comments at all?
For the procedure, the technical review, uh, this is for Mr. Riley. The, the point of the technical review is because ninety days is too short of a time in order to make all the review and changes that are needed that end up coming in the review process. So the technical review is usually a longer-term process and can take quite a while. Um, so the, the intent is not to avoid anything, it's actually to make sure that things are addressed appropriately. It's one reason why the conditions of approval are so important now to guide that technical review process later.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions for staff?
Um, I have a quick question. So in terms of the landscape and the mitigation, specifically for the town of Berthad being concerned about this is the entrance to their community and what, I mean, as we all do in our communities, want that to be a welcoming and great-looking place and, and while there are some people who may find solar panels very welcoming, there will be others that don't. And then um, more specifically to the one property clearly that's most affected, because it runs pretty much the whole north side of this. What um, what can the county require in order to ensure that this particular property isn't adversely affected? Given that is like literally the first criteria for a ten forty-one.
I, I think there is some flexibility in what is required. Um, I think that it's a, it's a big landscaping effort as the starting point. And it could be that to have a, a welcoming environment for the town of Berthad, it could be some targeted landscaping uh, versus the entire thing. Um, it's, the applicant does have a right to request this um, alternative landscape plan, so that's within their power to do so. Um, yeah, it's, it is a bit of a tricky question and hard to work out in this ninety-day period, so that's why there's a few conditions of approval for that in technical review.
So in the technical review process, is there a, a way for county staff to ensure that whether it's the current landscape plan or all, the alternative or some kind of a hybrid of that, that means the satisfaction of the property owners for the equine facility?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, is that, and is that part of the condition of approval, I guess? Is that the intention of the condition of approval is, I guess, a better question?
Yeah, so the intention i- is to make sure that we find adequate uh, landscape buffering or screening, whatever form it takes for adjacent property owners and for the referral agencies, which the town of Berthad is one.
Okay, that's my only question. Nothing else? Okay, thank you for that. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Slatsky, I didn't see your hand.
Yes, yeah, we're not kind of slow. Um, can you, I, I, I wonder what the, the purpose of this buffering is um, as far as noise. Are you, are you thinking the, that the buffer will reduce the noise efficiently so that horses are not adversely affected? Or is this just to hide the, the array?
The, I, I think traditionally landscape buffer is mostly an aesthetic buffer, so it's for appearances and aesthetics. Um, I, I'm not a noise expert. I don't know if Leah, you want to chime in on this, but I would think that it has some kind of effect, but I'm, I'm not sure.
The buffering is probably going to have minimal, but the distance does help reduce the um, noise coming from, say, the inverters or the transformers. Um, just using the inverse square law, we're already well below fifty decibels at the two hundred like going two hundred feet north from the perimeter of the solar array, the solar farm. And you know, below fifty decibels is, as you guys know, that's our nighttime level. Um, and it's even lower, uh, I think, I was doing some Um, and it's even lower, uh, I think, I was doing some calculations earlier today. But it is less than fifty decibels by the time, and that's without mitigation. We use the inverse square law without mitigation. Um, so anything in between the farm and property lines will probably help a little bit, but it's really distance.
There's, um, when I had my dairy, we were concerned about our neighbors, um, that we would be having traffic that would, um, would be noisy for them because we had trucks coming in all times of day and night. And, and this noise will be constant all times of day and night. But we negotiated with the developer a, a pretty extensive buffer. And there's ways to design them, um, where there's rows and rows of trees and they start off short and they get bigger and bigger. And it's costly and they have to be watered. Is that something that could be considered?
I think at this point, a- as, you know, as the planning commissioners, that is your, your option to explore or to recommend to county commissioners.
Okay, so that would be in line with amending or adding a condition of approval, I guess? And I'm not sure how you would word that. Are you perfectly? Oh, go ahead.
I, I think you would need us, an engineer, not some retired dairy farmer, um, to figure this out. And there must be sound engineers or buffer engineers. There's all kinds of engineers. Um, but I, I think thirty-five years is a long time to put up with something that's affecting your business.
John, would it be amenable to be able to say, um, work with the engineering department to, um, do the best possible sound mitigation without putting direct, um, pillars around the approval?
Yeah, and I, I, I wonder if, how much the property owners could be involved in that. I'm, I know they can't, they can sign off on it, but they can't vote on it, I suppose, if you will.
I mean, I think we're getting into a technical review. One of the things I've learned is that of what, what, what we're really dealing with. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I would go and even suggest, uh, a sound wall or something along those lines. But, um, you do need it to be engineered. And I, I, I'm not convinced that another mo- another, uh, condition isn't, is warranted. I think this can be covered in the technical review. Steph is aware of our concern and can certainly highlight that later on.
Okay, I agree. John, do you agree as well?
As long as, as there's a, a good faith effort done, I, I don't, I, I don't think we should just say we're going to do it. Then if we don't, there's no consequence. I, I, I mean, I trust the planning, um, department. And, um, if they say they're going to do it, I want to hear them say it.
I would just want to add, like, I think one of the purposes of this committee is that we do have the ability to outline what we require for our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And in this case, placing the burden on, directly on the staff's shoulders to do something in good faith that for, for whatever reason, y'all decide to win the Lotto and quit or whatever. And that information is lost and it's no longer protecting the current property owner or protecting the applicant, um, from undue requirements is maybe not wise. And so if we want to add some kind of a condition to the landscaping on the north side of the property, providing a sound buffer as determined by sound buffer experts, namely Leah, because she's making a face. Yep.
I will say.
Can I just say?
Wait, hold on one second.
I was going to say, one of the most effective sound barriers is going to be a wall, like a berm and a wall, um, because it's going to block your sound. Um, the sound waves can get through trees, things like that. Um, and actually, I was out there doing some readings because they're right next to the highway and then the off-ramp off of two eighty-seven. And it gets just as high as like seventy-eight decibels, um, out there because of the highway and because of the off-ramp. Um, so actually a berm and a sound wall would actually help buffer them from highway noise. But the project itself is, um, with the distance is adequate for our noise ordinance. But if you want to take those extra precautions and consider, um, like an earthen berm or, um, solid wood fence, uh, those would be better noise protection.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah.
So you're saying that we would be requiring, if we were to choose to do that, require a berm or a fence, that that would be mitigating noise that is quieter than the noise that already exists just from like the highway existing right there?
Sure, yeah, the highway, like I said, it's about, um, well, when you have a, a passenger truck with studded tires going by, it's about seventy-eight. And then, um, but the average traffic can anywhere, be anywhere from sixty to, like I said, low seventies with the off-ramp. So, and then the inverters and the transformers, and I found my numbers. Um, like I said, without any mitigation, two hundred feet to the north, um, we have twenty-nine decibels from the inverters. And there's even more distance because those inverters are farther south on the property. And then the transformer, same thing, it gets down to about forty-three decibels without mitigation, two hundred feet from the north edge of the solar field. Um, and yes, and there's already the traffic noise, which with distance from where their, the edge of like their horse pen is, it's about four hundred feet. And that brings them to about, um, again, with the inverse square law, that's about fifty-three decibels. So technically, the highway is still registering higher noise than an unmitigated solar field at this point.
Okay. Actually, you ma- you bring up a very good point. You already have the highway noise. There is no requirement currently in place to mitigate the noise from the highways. So you would actually have to subtract the highway noise and kick that out and only really mitigate what, if any, increase in noise from the solar array. Um, and I think that's the way. So how are you going to, you can do that, but I'm not sure it's a very effective way to, to, to do that unless you've got CDOT or somebody else to come into the project.
Yeah, and CDOT, they usually reevaluate their highways a little and they have, um, standards where they'll put in those, um, you've seen the concrete sound walls. Um, it's because that's another option too. Um, but yeah, they have to, they evaluate, and I think it has to be a ten-decibel increase before they'll start mitigating sound on their highways.
Okay. So I think at this point, if nobody has any further questions, then we can move into deliberations. And Commissioner Slatsky, if you still wanted to consider some type of amendment, then we can do that as well.
I'm fine with what, what staff has said. So we can, we can allow them, as far as I'm concerned, to take care of this and I, I have no objection.
One, one other thing we did ask for was a post-construction noise evaluation. So if we do, which that allows us to then require additional mitigation. Um, I probably should have said that upfront too. Um, but it does help us go back and require more if it does turn out that, you know, our, our calculations and our modeling is not correct. So it gives us that ability to go in and be stricter.
So at that point, would you then be able to go and require them to put in a berm? Is that possible post-construction? Put in a berm?
Yep, yep. If they provide a noise, um, evaluation and we're, we'll also go out and evaluate at the same time. But in that event, um, if they don't meet our ordinance, then we can, we have the ability to require more mitigation.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anything further they'd like to add before I call for a motion? Oh.
Connor? No motion from you today?
Uh, I will. Um, Scott, could you pull up the suggested motion, please? One second.
Have we closed the record?
Who was that?
That's John.
That was John.
Oh, sorry, John. Yes, I think we've stopped the discussion and we're moving on. Did you want to add something?
No, I just wondered if the record was closed.
Yes, we, we closed the public hearing portion after public comment and we were just in deliberations and now we're moving forward.
I move that the planning commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the application for the ten forty-one permit for the U.S. Welch Solar Facility ten forty-one permit, file number twenty-five, zone thirty-seven ninety-three, subject to the conditions of approval recommended by staff.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Weiss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eggleston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Slatsky?
Yes.
Cholet?
Yes. So motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to our final item of the night. Oh, okay. We're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll resume. I apologize, everyone. Okay. And we're back, so we're going to resume and go to our third and final item for the evening. The Wellington GMA Overlay Zone District, File Number 25-Zone, oh, 25-Zone 3802. Staff have a presentation for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Matt Lafferty, Principal Planner, Community Development Department. Tonight's item, last item on your agenda, is a legislative rezoning to amend the Larimer County zoning map by adopting an overlay zone district, GMA Overlay Zone District for the Town of Wellington area. This GMA Overlay Zone District will be in alignment with an intergovernmental agreement that is currently being negotiated between the town and the county. Notification, the packet containing the materials that you have tonight can be found on Page 718 through 740. It identifies that we did do notification thirty days in advance of the hearing. We've also posted in the public area on the 3rd floor of our building all of the maps and supporting materials for the public to view in accordance with state statutes. We also did a first-class mailing to all 250 property owners within the buffer or within the GMA planning area, not part of the urbanized area of Wellington or the incorporated area, but for the unincorporated areas. So we did do that as a special bonus for this area because we felt that the property owners needed to be properly notified. In addition, all other adequate notices have been provided. With that, may I share my screen? Thought I had it set up to do. Every time I do that. Bear with me just one minute. It was working earlier. There it is. It should let me share it, but... Now let me go up one. Get this. All right. There we go. Sorry about that. I thought it was set up properly. This item is being handled by the county staff, but it also includes staff from the Town of Wellington. Cody Byrd, the Wellington Planning Director, is present tonight and has been working with the county in cooperation on this matter. Just to give you a brief overview, there are some terms that we're going to use here tonight. One of those is comprehensive plan. I know that the Planning Commission is familiar with these terms, but sometimes the audience isn't. Comprehensive plan is just a long-term policy document that outlines our future plans for land use applications through it. It's policy, not regulation. Land use is a broadly policy-oriented description of how land in communities are to be used, such as agricultural, residential, commercial, or industrial. And so we'll use that term briefly tonight, too. Zoning, on the other hand, is a regulatory tool. It's the tool by which we implement our future land use maps and those types of things to make sure that our plans for the future are aligned with our comprehensive goals. Intergovernmental agreements, or IGAs, are contracts or agreements that are put into place between two governmental agencies that talk about how we will cooperate and work together on certain matters. In this case here tonight, it will be to discuss how we cooperate on land use matters. And then GMAs, or GMA areas, which are called, are often used in various terms. Almost all municipalities use them as a planning area. So if Wellington, for instance, has a planning area, and in their comprehensive plan, they call that a growth management area. It's a planning term. In other places, such as in our intergovernmental agreement, the growth management area is a term for a boundary that has been agreed upon between two municipalities and is used as a regulatory document, so, tool, versus a policy tool. So in a comprehensive plan, it's a policy tool. Outside of that and inside the intergovernmental agreement, it would be a regulatory tool. So, I don't know why this is pulling up every slide. It's not supposed to. Sorry about that. Thanks. Now I got to figure out where I was at. Keeps pulling all the slides up that I didn't want. Sorry. So just real briefly, the Town of Wellington has created a comprehensive plan for their area. That comprehensive plan took into consideration things like parks and open space, agriculture, low-density housing, medium-density housing, their downtown area, commercial-industrial uses, and the like, just as most plans do. In that case, it formulated a future land use map by which they have in their comprehensive plan, and you can see it here on the screen. And you can see on this map that that boundary that they've established is their planning boundary. And we're going to talk a little bit about that because the GMA boundary that we're proposing here tonight does not coincide with their planning boundary, and there's reasons why that occurs, and we'll explain that. Likewise, Larimer County has a comprehensive plan, and we too have a comprehensive plan, which is illustrated here on the screen. The county's rather large. You can see that the amount of detail that we have versus what the town would have is far different because of the scale of our community. However, when you drill down into the area and you look at the comprehensive plan for the county, when we did that, we did identify that Wellington, at some point in the future, would have a growth management area with the county in an intergovernmental agreement. And we identified that with this orange area around the Town of Wellington, anticipating that this would come. And so we're negotiating that process now, and hopefully we can get that GMA boundary put into place, which will give us the tools that we need to ensure that the Town of Wellington's comprehensive plan is followed. On the screen now is a boundary map that shows the boundary that we've negotiated with the Town of Wellington regarding what we believe the county should agree upon as the land use plan or the tool for growth management in this area. It does not match the town's boundary that is shown in their comprehensive plan. And the reason why is the areas that are excluded, between the black and the red lines, are areas that were slated for agriculture in the comprehensive plan for the Town of Wellington. There are already agricultural-oriented properties in the county, and so there's really no difference. So unless the land use is going to be strikingly different in comprehensive stance, there is really no reason for us to include those areas into the GMA and apply supplemental regulations to those. So we've agreed upon an existing boundary right now that is identified in the red here on the map, and it does not include those areas that identified. Another area that's identified on the map that's not included is located at the very southern end of the property. And in the comprehensive plan for the county, you can see on this map here, right below the term Wellington, there's a place called a cooperative planning area. And during the preparation of Larimer County Comprehensive Plan, we identified that area as a growth control area whereby the Town of Wellington, the Town of Timmouth, and the City of Fort Collins suggested that they would like to not grow together and have sort of a separator area. And so this cooperative planning area was established, but hadn't been discussed for a number of years. And so with the formation of the Timmouth GMA that you all adopted earlier, or the county commissioners adopted earlier this year, and with the formation of the Wellington GMA boundary, we're looking at that cooperative area and opening up some discussions as to what each of the municipalities thinks that that ultimate cooperative area should be treated as. And so we've tried to limit encroachments into that, and both Timmouth and Wellington have agreed not to include, not to establish this GMA in that area at this time. We might establish it in the future and expand those areas, but only after we've had discussions with each of the municipalities and see how we're going to treat that cooperative planning area. So, GMA boundaries, what's the benefit of these GMA boundaries? Well, they apply, they allow county to guide property owners on land use proposals in the unincorporated areas in a manner that aligns us with the town's goals. And so, right now, in that area around the Town of Wellington, if a property owner came in or a developer came in and proposed to do a subdivision, a rezoning application, or a special review application, they would do it based upon county zoning. And that county zoning does not necessarily align with what the town is trying to accomplish in their long-term goals. But by providing the overlay zone district, staff at the county has given the authority to work with property owners to give them the opportunity to align with the town's objectives in their comprehensive plan so we can seek alternative zoning that would align with their comprehensive plan that we couldn't do absent the GMA boundary. So it gives us a tool to help us align and do better things with the community and align our goals between the county and the Wellington. It requires the application of common design standards, so we want to have common road standards. So if we're developing within that boundary, we want to make sure that the roads that the county would be approving with development are the same level and type and style of roads that are being done in Wellington so that at some point in the future, when Wellington chooses to expand and encompass an area, they would be willing to annex it because it meets standards that are common to both jurisdictions. That aligns with drainage standards and other standards that we have in place. It emphasizes implementation of annexation policies. So it just emphasizes that the state has annexation policies and regulations that are set out in statute, and we want to reinforce that those should be happening at the time development is being proposed in those areas. It defines management and maintenance of infrastructure, so when roads and other things are put into place, it defines who's going to be responsible for managing those facilities while they're in place and upon annexation, who might take responsibility for that. It ensures implementation of agreed-upon procedural practices. So we agree in the intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Wellington, as it's currently drafted, that subdivision proposals, if somebody's going to develop the land, or a rezoning application, or a special review application, are proposed to the county, and they are contiguous to the town limits, we would defer that application to the town to be annexed and processed underneath the town's rules. If it's not contiguous to the town limits, then the county can process the application. However, we will invite the town into the conversation to give us recommendations on what they think standards and regulations should be applied and make sure that it meets certain design standards associated with their goals. And finally, it defines what decision-making authority is going to happen on those applications. So if the county's going to be processing the application, it defines that those decisions are going to be made by our Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. And it makes sure that if it is annexed into the town, that those decisions move over to the town for their commitments and their entitlements. And so that's really what the GMA Overlay Zone District does. The intergovernmental agreement that keeps coming up in the conversations is agreement between the town and the county. And so the commissioners and the town board will look at that, and they will agree to that agreement. And once it's signed, if it's signed by both parties, we would ask that this overlay zone district be put into place so that we can further reinforce and implement that plan. And with that, I would open it up for conversations. I have suggested motion on the screen. I would ask that you guys identify that if this is suggested for approval, that the rezoning not be finalized until the intergovernmental agreement is signed and put into effect. And I also ask that you would approve, or move tonight to certify that the Larimer County zoning map for both the Front Range and the Total County, you certify that the boundary is being properly shown, which I provided that in your packet. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Commissioner Slutsky?
Yeah, Matt, can you show the map? It showed the, that's the one, no, it was, well, that's good enough, I think. But it had more detail. My question's about agricultural land that's captured within the GMA. That's, that's good. But there was another one. I should have written down the number. It had the red outline of the GMA and the black outline of the town. Yeah, the previous one. Go back with that. So within, man, that's not the one I had in mind, but this'll do. The area that is yellow is mostly, at least on the west side of, County Road 9 isn't really marked there, but that's, that's the boundary of the town right now, is County Road 9. There's a lot of agriculture aligned. There's two dairies and maybe a couple hundred acres of farm ground. How, what has, have you or the town had conversation with the owners of those properties and given them sort of a chance to have the input about what they have in mind for their properties as far as long-term plans and how this affects them?
Commissioner Slutsky, yes, we've had conversations. One thing that we did do as part of this application was we conducted an open house meeting with the property owners in the area. We notified all 250 property owners in the unincorporated area up there, had an open house, allowed them to ask questions. We had a fairly extensive dialogue that evening. And then we've made ourselves available for any comments since then. The five or six comments that I've received in writing generally have been framed around two issues. One, property owners that would prefer not to be within a GMA boundary for a variety of reasons. They don't want to have additional regulation or rules placed upon them that might impact them in the long run. Others just don't agree with the land use framework that has been proposed or that exists in the comprehensive plan for the Town of Wellington, which, you know, that framework map and plan will be subject to some revisions probably in the next couple of years. And so there will be opportunity to see modifications to that because it's a living document. It doesn't stay stagnant forever. Land use does change. And so we did open it up for property owners to come in and be involved in that process. The reason why some of the agriculture was taken out, we took out the agricultural properties that did not have a new land use proposal on them. So if it's, if the Town of Wellington's comp plan identified a property as agriculture, and we have it as agriculture, there was no reason to include it within the boundaries of the proposed GMA. But if it's currently being used as agriculture and the future framework plan of the comprehensive plan for Wellington says it should be industrial or housing or whatnot, we include it in inside the boundaries because that's what we want to align to. And property owners have the opportunity, had the opportunity and still do until the commissioners make a decision on this to suggest their changes. However, this is what we've agreed upon and suggested changes would have to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners or, you know, if they want to move the boundary, that would be fine. But this is what we're proposing at this time. But this is what we're proposing at this time.
But if they don't want to make changes, they just want status quo, what are their options?
Well, pretty much adopting the GMA overlay zone district is status quo. It doesn't change their existing zoning. So if you're zoned O-open, for instance, which is the majority of the area surrounding Wellington, that is what the zone district is, you maintain your current zoning and your current rights by that zoning. And you're allowed to construct a new house under that or whatever your land opportunities are under that zone district, you're allowed to continue to do that. It's when you ask to subdivide, rezone, or do a special review that we will look at what your options are underneath your current zoning, as well as the potential uses that would be allowed by the town of Wellington. So it expands the opportunity of uses.
Can you talk a little bit about forced annexation? Properties that end up in enclave? That could be agricultural property?
Yeah, that could be any property, yes. An enclave is a, is a term used in statute by which, when a property or group of properties is completely encompassed by a municipality such as Wellington. So if the town of Wellington annexed a series of real properties and they ultimately surround all of the properties within an area, creating a box around it, then that becomes an enclave. And after that enclave has existed for three years, the town of Wellington can, it may not, it may choose not to, but it can force annexation upon those people within that box. That's currently a state statute. It's not driven by us or by our intergovernmental agreement. That's a requirement of state statutes. Many municipalities do not follow that standard. You know, some communities say, well, you know, we can have an enclave and we don't have to annex unless the property owner's willing, and then they won't do that. But, so, until those annexation proposals are up, that's the case. The key here is it has to be real property. So the town could not annex down County Road Seven, across, take the right way in and then annex all across County Road 68 and then back down County Road Nine, and then say, we created an enclave. Because the rightway is not considered real property. Therefore, it doesn't justify a serial annexation or an annexation that creates an enclave. So it has to be real property. That's the only time that forced annexation is plausible.
So I got, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions for staff? I just have a quick clarifying question. Or, yeah, clarifying. So, like, to the north end where you're saying the town of Wellington Comprehensive Plan indicates that certain property is agriculture. And the county also recognizes it as agriculture. Is there any potential harm in it not being included? Like, in contemplating the comprehensive plan in the town of Wellington, the desire for buffer is strong, right? The town very much wants to remain its own space in the world, right? And that agriculture provides that. So is there any disadvantage or potential harm that comes from that not being included?
No, because the only thing that can occur on that property today is rural residential development or agriculture, that what's allowed by that O-open zone district. So if the town, the town would have to annex it and change it to whatever their agricultural zone would be. So leaving it out really just leaves it in the status quo that it is at this point in time.
Perfect, thank you. I know you're technically the applicant, but would it be inappropriate for me to ask if the planning director from Wellington wants to add anything to this discussion?
No, that'd be appropriate.
Mr. Bird?
Thank you, Commissioners. Cody Bird, Planning Director for Town of Wellington. I didn't come tonight with a script or anything that I wanted to say in particular, but I would speak to the town of Wellington and direction from our Board of Trustees has been supportive of pursuing the IGA for Growth Management Area with Laramie County. And we have been working closely with staff to advance these goals for the community. So we appreciate your consideration tonight. I've been taking a few notes, and I know you have a public hearing, so I'd like to take some additional notes from that hearing. And I may choose to come back up and address some of those comments at that time, if that's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, I appreciate it. Does anybody have any comments for Mr. Bird at this time? Or questions, I mean? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of this item. Anyone wishing to give comment can approach the podium. You have three minutes, please state your name. And I believe we have a list to start with. But again, state your name, and if your last name is difficult, please spell it.
We do have a list of people who signed up in advance. We'll start with Rodney Smith and followed by Dixie Loufoe.
Thank you for staying in late this evening. My name is Rodney Smith, and it's pretty easy to spell. Anyways, I reside at 7725 Windwood Lane, which is right off from County Road 62. And I love Wellington just the way it is, but I do realize that growth and change is inevitable. I attended the presentation held in Wellington and asked many questions to understand the plan. I'm not a novice to real estate as I have invested in a number of homes, rentals, and commercial properties in Laramie and other counties. I bought my first home when I was 21. At that time, I was employed as a residential and commercial appraiser for the Laramie County Assessor's Office. Wellington is situated in one of the most beautiful areas with mountain views and abundance of reservoirs. I had no idea there were so many lakes in the area until I relocated from Loveland approximately four years ago. Now Wellington is poised for growth and change as we are in a crucial point with the planning and zoning. It is now, at the time, that will define the future of Wellington. It can be known as the Cherry Creek of Northern Colorado or the Pueblo. I do understand that affordable housing is a huge issue and must be addressed. And I believe Fort Collins also wants to offer affordable housing, but they don't want it located in Fort Collins. Statistically, more affordable homes are for the person who may not make as much and is less educated. And there is a correlation showing that less expensive, low-income neighborhoods experience higher crime rates. The plan has been presented shows as many dwellings as possible to be crammed out into Wellington. The current plan has none or very little open space, recreation area, walking trails, or parklands. I see absolutely no areas for homes on small acreages with custom homes. There is absolutely nothing in the plan that would make Wellington a place anyone would want to live. Fort Collins' surrounding cities are all incredible. Do we really want to ruin Fort Collins and Northern Colorado's great reputation as a beautiful, safe place to live? It seems to me that we're putting all of the low-income housing out in Wellington and putting in as many as we possibly can. In the high-density area, I forget how many homes can be placed on one acre. Do you know what that was in the high-density?
I can't speak to that directly. We'll bring it up in comments section after this.
Okay. I'm actually embarrassed by for Laramie County's planning team to submit such a basic plan. And I don't know if you've actually looked at the map and the actual details of what is planned, but I hope that you will.
Sir, your time is up, so if you could just wrap it up real quick?
That's really about it. I hope that we become a Cherry Creek and not a Pueblo. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to reinforce for tonight's purposes, this is not an evaluation of the town's comprehensive plan. This is a matter of whether or not we are going to put a GMA boundary into place that would support that plan. And so, in no way, shape, or form did we do an analysis of their plan and that plan was put together and adopted in 2020 by their board.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty, I appreciate that.
Dixie Loufoe is up next, followed by Curtis Bridges.
Hi, I'm Dixie Loufoe, L-O-O-F-B-O-R-O. My husband and I live just off of East County Road 62, west of Highway One. We moved and purchased our property in 2006, and we've enjoyed living there since. The beauty of the area, the views, the wonderful neighbors, the peacefulness and the comfort in knowing crime is low to zero. And that is due to the quality of people and their values that choose to live in this beautiful part of Laramie County. I grew up in Wellington and worked at the town of Wellington from 18 to 21 years of age. I've seen many changes take place and with expected growth, but with unexpected growth can come both good and bad. With more dwellings built, come more people. With more people, more commerce. I understand that. How this is all accomplished, however, and how is it beneficial to we who live in the areas you are interested in is in question. Why squeeze as many dwellings in as possible in every parcel of property? The property we own and live on is by choice. In the country with more space, beautiful views, quiet with the opportunity to truly enjoy what Northern Colorado has to offer each and every day. The plan would change Alaska landscape forever. We will not have the right to brag about the scenery, the mountain views, the open spaces, et cetera, since a possibility of not even being able to look out the window to see those views is at risk. Why risk the quality of life offered in the community and surrounding area? So many people come out and jog, walk their dogs, just simply take walks, ride their bicycles, is because it's a beautiful place to enjoy just being. Windsor and Fort Collins were mentioned during the presentation. We are not Windsor nor are we Fort Collins. They are two beautiful cities. We, in the surrounding area of Wellington, would like to keep our beauty as well. More is not always better. If you were one of us who are against the plan as it is now, would you reconsider have questions or want this potentially forced upon you? I ask the Board of Commissioners to deny this plan as is. Please put more time and effort and interest into a comprehensive plan that would keep Wellington and all of Northern Colorado a beautiful place to live as voted many years. Thank you for your consideration in the interests of the residents that will be directly affected and indirectly affected and the planning for the future of Wellington and Laramie County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Curtis Bridges is up next, and that is the last person who signed up in advance.
Good evening. My name's Curtis Bridges, just like Lloyd Bridges, B-R-I-D-G-E. Yes, okay, Uncle Lloyd. Well, my program is just a little different than everybody else's. I've invested millions, let me repeat that number for you, millions of dollars into that area. I own 360 acres of agricultural land. I'm the guy who cooperated with Pooters School District to sell one of my farms so that we now have a real metal in high school in Wellington. I was the Director of Economic Development for the town of Wellington for seven years through the Chamber of Commerce. But one of the things I'm going to bring out to you in all of this planning stuff is very simple. We ain't got no infrastructure, how about that? I met with our state representative here about three weeks ago. We're the only place that has a two-lane bridge going over I-25. And they're talking about some new businesses coming in, blah, blah, blah. You can't, if you try to get off the I-25, it's Wellington exit going north, good luck. Good luck, you'll be sitting there for 10 minutes. We ain't got the infrastructure to support any growth at this time. We've got a developer that has bought most of all the ground from County Road 58 going north, right to where I have my curve. The curve is mine there at Wellington on Highway One. And he's planning, as you can see, to build a ton of new homes along there. Roberson. And I think that more than makes up for whatever they think they're lacking in the future. Again, try and drive down Highway One when all those new homes are built. That ain't going to work. So my point to you is, I know Wellington. I've been the economic development person. I've invested, I've got a warehouse complex in Wellington, et cetera, et cetera. So I've invested a lot of money in there. And if anything were to happen, I wish that downtown would look better than it does looking like 1973, okay? The subdivisions are beautiful downtown. Pathetic is the only word I worry about. And that's where I'd be focusing my attention. I think that pretty well sums it up. But like you said, I am the real deal. I have been very involved, have spent a lot of money into it. So I have farms west of Highway One, and that's just where I'd like to keep them. I'm the guy growing your food. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Does anyone else wish to give public comment? Hold on this gentleman, and then you can come up.
I'm Len Rourke. I moved to Laramie County in 1994. Bought the land in '93. And it's east of I-25. And it's east of the current development of Wellington on the east side of the interstate. When I bought this land with my wife, who unfortunately has since died, and my family is scattered around. Anyway, we bought... Could you put the map that you had earlier up there that's similar to the one that I got at the community meeting a few weeks ago? Have you got a pointer?
You can just stay there and tell me where you want me to point, Len. I don't have a walkabout link here. Len? Len? You'll have to stay at the diocese and just talk us through it.
Well, I've got to show you the location that I'm talking about on the map.
Okay.
Is it on this map here? Can you see it?
Yes.
Could you point to it here and then head back to the diocese?
I'm not tall enough. Yeah, it's that piece of property right here. This is the wild line, right?
So you're talking south of it?
South of the...
This property?
Right.
You can go back to the, you can go back to the dentist.
Just so we make sure they can hear you with the microphone.
For those online, he's referring to this area here.
That quarter section just south of the wildlife area. And those three... That square there needs, that red boundary needs to move to the left side of that square. And the south, the north, the east-west boundary needs to be moved down there to, one section south of Jefferson. So that those three, those four parcels there are all people. There's three property owners, well, four property owners in there today. I'm the one in the left, upper-left-hand corner. The narrow parcel that's right east of me is the old homestead property. All that property was farmland prior to nineteen ninety-four. And then the rest of the property initially was one parcel of a hundred and three acres that included the square to the south of me and the rest of the land there, uh, that's on the east part of that lot. There's, apparently today, there are four property owners. I don't know, I believe the, the owner to the east, I fail to remember his name right now, but he is still raising cattle and, and everything.
I'm going to.
The people that own the old homestead property raise chickens, and they have horses, and he works for the county highway department.
Sir, are you asking us to change the boundary?
All the residents of Larimer County since nineteen ninety. So, what I am here to ask you to do is to move those red lines. The red line on the north that separates me from the wildlife area, move it down to the south end of that quarter section. move the red line that is at the east end of that quarter section. Move that red line west as he's showing it on the graph, where the separation of Wellington from the rural area exists.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I think we know what you're asking, and we appreciate you taking to explain. And I appreciate you coming in tonight. Do we have anyone? Oh, we do, sir. Come on up.
Well, good evening. I, uh, my name's Douglas Neal. I'm a homeowner in Wellington. Uh, I have a couple of homes. And so, um, I haven't done very much with administrative activities like these meetings, but, uh, we, my wife and I became aware of the developments that are near our properties. And, um, Curtis put it pretty succinctly that we don't have the infrastructure. I've seen this in many other places that I've been through in my years. And, um, things such as the water is, the water situation's horrible in Wellington. So, if we zone for all these, this high density and these new homes, it's, you know, obviously we're, it's not ready for it. And then the roads are another issue I've seen throughout the country, is that we could begin to see these big delays if we implement the building ahead of the road improvements. So, my concern is that we, um, we do not only the improvements, but the pacing to match the improvements. So, you know, obviously, I'd like it to just stay the way it is, but I don't own all those other properties. And then the additional thing would be to be sure that we, uh, account for crime, increases in crime with some kind of, now, I know this, I did not know this meeting was going to be this, uh, addressing the things that you are, the GMA boundaries, but I'm addressing you guys as the planning, uh, and now that I'm aware of that, just hoping that as you implement these changes to Wellington, that those are taken into consideration. Not just the improvements, but the timing as well, and, uh, quality of life for all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wishes to give public comment? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Pia Jansen, P-I-A-J-A-N-S-E-N. I live right between Curtis Bridges and Rodney Smith on County Road 62. I've been there for fifteen years. Um, I would, um, want to just second that we don't have the infrastructure to build anything to the west of Highway one for sure. Um, we are all aware of the amount of accidents that are happening on this road and all the, um, little county roads that come out into, um, Highway one. So, before we do anything over there, we need more infrastructure. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to give public comment? Mr. Bird?
Commissioners, thank you. Uh, Cody Bird, Planning Director for the Town of Wellington. Um, I heard a few comments there, and I'm not here to rebut any of the concerns of the residents of Larimer County or Wellington. Um, but there were just a couple of things I thought would be useful in terms of the town's comprehensive plan considerations relative to the growth management area that you're considering tonight. A couple of those items that I'm hearing about is the infrastructure. And while that's not part of the growth management area boundary that you're considering tonight, I do want to assure the County Planning Commission that the infrastructure is certainly top of mind for Wellington staff and our community. That when we laid out our comprehensive plan boundaries and the, uh, the proposed future land use map that was aligned with not only the types of development that would be indicative of the area for access to roads, access to rail, major intersections, um, we identified the land uses that would be appropriate for that, but also what infrastructure it would take to serve those areas for those uses. And that's what informed our, uh, future land use map. When we did our comprehensive plan, we also closely aligned our future land use and our growth management area with our infrastructure plans that we also undertook master plans on, and those are aligned with the ability to serve. So, our growth management area is defined in our comprehensive plan, matches our area that we can serve for water and sewer infrastructure. And our, our water and sewer infrastructure, our, our treatment plants have just undergone massive construction projects, over ninety million dollars, to be able to sustain community growth, but in a respectful way. Um, we do take the, the growth very seriously. This growth management area that the, uh, County Planning Commission is considering tonight is not an indication that that growth will occur, but the, the town is committed to understanding how it can occur and support those uses over time. The other component that I heard tonight that I wanted to, to briefly mention was the, um, the desire of the county residents to maintain their, their, the status quo, maintain what they have out there. They moved there for a reason, and we totally respect that. Um, preserving agricultural resources, preserving open space and buffers is very important to the community of Wellington, and our comprehensive plan reflects those goals. Um, relative to the policy on annexation, um, the, the Board of Trustees for the Town of Wellington's policy is currently, uh, they won't consider an annexation without the written consent or request from the property owner, and that continues to be our governing policy for annexations. So, I think it's, uh, Mr. Lafferty at the county staff said something similar, but I would support the same. Uh, a homeowner or a property owner would need to come and make a request for a development proposal before the town would be looking to annex those properties. I appreciate your time this evening. Uh, the community of Wellington still supports this GMA overlay, uh, zone boundary, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Is there any further public comment, either here or online?
If there are any members of the public online who would like to make comment, please use the raise your hand function or star nine now. No members of the public have their hands raised.
Thank you. So, with that, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. Um, at this time, does staff want to offer any other information in response to public comment?
I would just like to emphasize, uh, a couple of points. I think Cody wrapped up a little bit of the perspective of the town and how they deal with annexation, but I want to emphasize that the plan that we're talking about, that the comprehensive plan is the town's plan. It's not the county's plan. The county is just wanting to work with the town to accomplish their plan in the long run. Um, the quality of that plan and, and the subjectivity of it should be taken up with the Town of Wellington if there's going to be modifications, in alignment with the infrastructure comments that were going on. If somebody were to propose a development inside the GMA boundary but in the county, and we were proposing, we were processing it, that project has to stand on its own merits and demonstrate that it has adequate infrastructure and public facilities to serve it. Otherwise, we're not going to be inclined to approve it. And that's the timeframe in which we deal with it. Yeah, there are places in these, uh, growth management areas that you will find that are currently not serviced by certain type of infrastructure, or the infrastructure is lacking, but that infrastructure gets put in as development is proposed. And so, um, we would evaluate it at that time, not at this time. So, this is just merely to say that we have a plan in place and that we can work with property owners in the future if they so choose to develop their properties.
Thank you. Does anyone have any further questions? Okay, so we can move into deliberations. Does anyone have any comments they wish to offer? Oh, I did. I did that already. Nobody has any comments anyone offer? I'm gonna offer one.
Can I comment, share?
Oh, go ahead, John. I'm sorry. Mr., uh, Commissioner Slutske.
John, it's fine. Um, I just, I, I'm glad that Cody was here. Um, well, I'm glad Matt was here too, but, um, to, to, to give voice to the fact that most of the concerns are really best taken up with the Town of Wellington. And, and, and I find it interesting that, that all the people that came and gave comment were not, um, as far as I can tell, um, town citizens. They're living outside. So, they are, in, in effect, our, our people, and I'm just glad that we have a place that we can give them voice. And the fact that, um, Mr. Bird was here to hear that is, is not bad. And I would just encourage y'all to, um, to take part in the town politics, if you will. And when there's a chance to do what you did here tonight, do it in Wellington. And, um, and I think you'll find you have some support. Um, I used to live nearby, and I too was not in the Town of Wellington, but I do, um, I do feel your pain. And, uh, and I think that there, there are people in, in the town government that will hear you. So, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, before we go to a motion, I just want to make a couple comments. Um, uh, when we introduced ourselves today, I, we all say where we're from, and I said I live in the Town of Wellington, and I do. Um, and so, for me, um, some of you I'm very familiar with, and we've had many conversations. Um, I understand what you're saying and to what Commissioner Slutske said. I would encourage you to come talk to the, the Town of Wellington Planning Commission. Choices about development and about the comprehensive plan and all of that are made by that body, not this body. And I can assure you that your concerns, your wishes will be received there. And the people that live both inside of the town and on the outskirts of town or in the greater, um, northern area community, we all consider ourselves people of Wellington, whether you live in the town limits or not. And so, your comments tonight are well received. They're very much appreciated. I know they mean a lot to me. And this process that we're doing tonight literally is giving you all an opportunity to have a say in a more significant way, not in a less significant way. This is not planning the five million dollar apartment complex on your property, I promise. And so, I hope that you can see this for what it is. Please, it's the first Monday of the month, unless it's a holiday, at six-thirty in the Lieber Center in the Town of Wellington. Come and talk to the planning commissioners there, please. And that's all I have to say. So, with that, I would ask for a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Legislative Zoning Amendment to the Larimer County Zoning District map and the Larimer County Zoning District Front Range Area map, File Number 25 Zone 3802, to adopt the Wellington Growth Management Area Overlay Zone District as proposed by the County Development Department, subject to the following conditions. A, the rezoning shall be finalized until, shall not be finalized until the inter, intergovernmental agreement between Larimer County and the Town of Wellington is signed by both entities and recorded. Number two, I move the Planning Commission certify the Larimer County Zone map and the Larimer County Zoning District map, front range area as proposed.
Second? Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Slutske?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Chollet?
Yes. Do we have any reports from, oh, I'm sorry, the motion passed, or the item passed. Do we have any, um, reports from staff today?
We do not.
All right. Well, with that, we are adjourned. Everybody have a very good evening and a safe drive home.